This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Okay, here we are, couple of minutes late, calling to order the meeting of the Southampton Select Board for February, hello?
Fifteenth.
February fifteenth, we got a little snow delay, so calling the meeting to order at about six or five, if we can stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good, thank you. Somebody moved my chair.
Okay, great.
You got the short one and I got the tall one tonight, anyway. Okay, so we do have a quorum, John is up at another meeting upstairs, and as soon as he's done, he will be down to join us, but Dan and Stephen are here, so we will get started. Joy, from what I know, will be joining us at our next meeting, as far as I know, so she'll be coming back to the fold, okay? So with that, open time for the public. Yes, ma'am?
Margaret Larson, nine David Street.
Pull it down.
Is that better? Okay. And I am a member of the Hampshire Regional School Committee and the Norris School Committee. So this might be on the agenda later, but I actually have a meeting to go to at the high school, so I'm hoping that we can discuss now the letter that I sent expressing concern about withholding assessments for the high school. So I understand that the third quarter has been sent, but John Lumber did say in, at a public meeting, that the fourth quarter was pending, so I just wanted to kind of talk that through, because we are in a state of chaos in our central office, and it's not resolving as quickly as we'd like it to, and so I'm concerned about anything adding to that, because if assessments were withheld, then we have to find other sources in order to meet our obligations, whether it's central office or an entire budget. I would argue that it should just be targeted at central office, but I would prefer that nothing be targeted in that sense because of the issues. So I wasn't sure if there are any questions that I could answer, or...
Well, I think, just to say, I think at least Dan and I and John, Stephen had another meeting at Concom, but we joined you at the regional meeting the other night, which was very informative, so I think we learned a lot, too, in terms of what struggles the school is going through. And I think we do still want to have a joint, I think, Select Board, Finance Committee, and School Committee meeting, just so that everybody's on the same page, but I guess I had not scheduled it yet, partly because school vacation next week, and we were necessarily going to get anybody around next week, so it'll probably not happen until that first week of March, or maybe the last week of, I don't know, probably the first week of March. We might do a special meeting as we start budget hearings and things, but I think it would be useful to have the School Committee come and just fill in everybody at the same point as to what's going on up there. And I know, I guess I was assuming that after the meeting, there's been somewhat of an accelerated effort by Mickey, working with our accountant, to try and get at least enough done, so that we can help, you know, move forward on our own books as well. So I hadn't scheduled anything yet, but we still do want to have at least members of the School Committee come and talk to us about, you know, their thoughts about what's going on, and I know it's a struggle that you guys are going through.
So as a Select Board, would you prefer that be just the Southampton Select Board with the committees, or would it be better to have that as part of the Hampshire Municipal Advisory Council, HMAC, which would be all of the finance subcommittees, et cetera?
Yeah, I think we were thinking just the Southampton.
Because we were planning on having another, you know, the HMAC?
Yeah.
But someone has to set that up, so maybe Goshen might, or somebody might.
Yeah, okay. Well, and whether it's, you know, all of the committee, you know, they may not all need to come, but if a couple of members at least could come and...
We would want a quorum, so, yeah.
We'd want to try and get, you know, Finance Committee and us together and just sort of understand it, you know, I know it may be a little bit still before we actually see some real budget figures from the school.
Yes.
But we want to understand what's out there, you know?
Right, so we're still...
Having everybody hear the same thing, because we're going to have a lot of decisions we've got to make on budgets going forwards.
We're still on schedule to certify E and D by the end of February.
Okay.
It might be the last day of February, but it'll be by the end of February, and I know there's still some end of year reporting for the elementary schools, particularly related to the grants, and so I know that is being worked on. One of our challenges has been the lack of HR assistance, and so Mickey has been pulled into doing payroll.
Right.
And this last week, he spent 20 hours working on payroll, which is not the best use of his time. So we are trying to bring in an HR professional, and we've been trying to do that for a little while.
Okay, good. Okay, well, let's assume that we will work on finding a common time and scheduling something, probably not a night of a Select Board meeting, but an interim week?
Yes.
That we can find one that won't conflict with too many people.
Yeah, we'll be as flexible as we can and just kind of, yeah, schedule around yourselves and then we'll show up.
Yeah, we will, okay, we'll let you know.
Okay.
But that would be helpful, yeah, any questions, Steve?
What vote did we exactly take when we were at the school district?
We allowed the assessment to go through for the third quarter. We didn't even talk about the fourth quarter, yet.
Okay, so it all went through.
Yeah, that hasn't even really been on the table.
Thank you for straightening that up for us.
Yeah, it was just the third quarter, and that did go through, yeah.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
I don't want to belabor this, but it may not be clear to folks who are just tuning in tonight. It's a struggle for us as a participating town to not have insight and reconciliation of prior years occurring, so there's a concern. But the immediate impact when we took that vote was that we'd heard that our state aid would be withheld, okay. So this is for the benefit of the taxpayers.
Yes.
We're not trying to be vindictive, but there are knock-on consequences that look quite severe to us.
Yeah.
So partnership will get us out of it.
Right, so, yes, absolutely, and I think on our end, there could have been more communication, always. So because our business administrator has been working so closely with DESI and with DOR, we've been given a lot of grace by the Commonwealth. They've been willing to extend some deadlines for us, there are some hard stops, but because we have been in communication with them on a multi-times-a-week basis, then that, I think that has helped a lot. One of the issues last year, when our certification for E and D was late and also incorrect, there was no grace extended because there had not been that communication. So this year is different, and there's so much communication with Jay Sullivan, who heads up the DESI Finance Office, and I think he is supportive of where we're going. He has also expressed concern about the convoluted aspect of our district and how challenging that can be. And so I am personally agnostic on the regionalization question, because I don't know enough about it, like complete regionalization, but there is some movement towards getting the research done, so that we can find out what that would really mean. And I think that would help, too.
All right, thank you, Margaret, appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
All right. So, thanks, so we don't have any public hearings tonight, and we do have some reports to the Select Board first. So we have a couple of folks here. Paul Neiman, you're kind of first on the list for the Planning Board, so why don't you come on up?
So, my report, which I believe you have in front of me, that was forwarded. Priorities and activities, we're awaiting the approval of E code from the Attorney General's Office from last year's town meeting. We got a letter asking for a 45-day extension, so that might put us sometime in late March. It's going to be almost a year before that last town meeting, that stuff is going to be hopefully approved.
Just to be clear, it's not waiting E code, you're waiting for the Attorney General's approval of the zoning bylaws.
Exactly, which was incorporated into E code, yeah.
Right, but they're looking at the actual bylaws themselves, yeah.
So then, going forward, when we get that approval back, then we're going to have to review that to make sure that all the changes we made, all the edits, whatever, and do a quick review of that to make sure that that's acceptable. Going forward, I just got notice this past week from PVPC that they've awarded a grant that we submitted regarding the Water Supply Protection Overlay District. We were going to cover that in this year's zoning revisions going forward, but that's going to save us some time and money, because they're going to do it with our help, so that's encouraging.
That'll be a D L T A grant, like you had in the past?
Yeah. Next on our list, our priorities is revising the solar bylaws. They're kind of outdated, we, as I explained to our board members, Dan Stevens on the Board and Mark Arnold, we did that kind of on the fly back in 2014, maybe, 13, 14, because solar was becoming pretty popular, and we had nothing on the books, so we scrambled to get something on the books, but there's been a lot of changes since then, and we've got to revise that to get up to speed. Especially, one of the most important things is that these battery storage facilities for solar that are now becoming pretty prominent, you can have battery storage facilities, whether you have an onsite solar field or not, and if you can just imagine a trailer truck, or two or three, being asked to be placed on a site in town strictly for battery storage, without solar fields. So it's kind of important we address that sooner than later, because there's going to be obviously some impact on that. And most recently, the agrivoltaic solar field at the Shista Orchards that we passed recently, they have onsite battery storage for that particular field, so that's all self-contained, but that was a pretty, that was an important project, and it was good to see that type of a project come forward that is going to sustain that orchard financially for some years to come, but also with minimal impact to the orchard itself. So that was interesting. We also have to clarify and weed out some language in special permit and site plan review, because there's some kind of archaic language in there that repeats itself, so we can make it less confusing for the applicants. Our policies and procedures and fees will have to be reviewed, and we're also, I'm assuming, judging with some communications I've had with Sierra Simmons from the Housing Authority, ongoing discussions for affordable housing in town, including 40R and inclusionary. Grants, as I mentioned previously, we had a grant from D L T A, from PVPC, that was awarded personnel. We have a full board at this time, so there's no personnel issues. I was, one of the questions asked, what would I do with a magic wand if I had one? To make the board better, well, I think we've had a good board over the years, and we continue to have one. It's getting increasingly hard sometimes, because we have to keep incorporating a consultant that we have from the board, and the magic wand that I've asked for even last year, I think, and I'll continue to ask for it, also being cognizant of the fact that the town is stretched for funds in a lot of different areas, but on the same token, I'll, I think it's important that we should consider a land use or a sustainability department within the town that would assist the Building Department, the Planning Board, the Conservation Commission, and the Housing Authority, and ZBA also, for that matter, kind of like a quasi-department head. Because some of this that we're faced with today is a little bit beyond the scope of a volunteer board, thus having to incorporate the need for a consultant, which costs some money, to make sure that, and the consultant we have right now, Richard Harris out of South Hadley, is outstanding, because he's got a good grasp of mass general law, which is important in going through a lot of projects that we have to make sure that it's within the law. It was interesting that, with all due respect, the conservation agent that was hired sometime last year, and I assume that it was, this person was hired in his very part-time, I understand, he was hired because of the attrition in the Conservation Commission itself, correct? Because there was people that resigned?
No.
And it wasn't a full board, or?
No, not at that time, when he was hired on, they'd been looking, they'd been asking for a part-time conservation agent for quite a while, and we were able to do that through the ARPA funds?
Okay.
That we made available to do that. It's a two-year stopgap, it's not a permanent scenario, when that money runs out, just like yours does for Richard. I mean, the idea, though, is to have at least put somebody in place to sort of fill that position, get some momentum going, and then hopefully build the case to try and make that a real position, so we'll see.
I mean, Richard is only, some of our ARPA money is going to zoning revisions, which it was earmarked for, but on the same token, we still use him for projects that are not ARPA-related at this point, so it's an ongoing position. The MS4 stormwater and stormwater management that we have in our zoning code, in which the Planning Board is the authority on, you know, I've had conversations with Randall Kemp and his department, he's got all he can do, too, but you know, with all the subdivisions in town and the stormwater management from even some residential projects that have been issued permits, that's a big task, and it's an awful lot to ask a volunteer board to go through and make sure that everybody's got their retention ponds, their storage areas, their basins cleaned and everything, it's, so who knows? We have it on the books, but there's, being an authority, somebody's got to enforce it.
Sure.
And I certainly haven't done any enforcement or checking on these stormwater management systems in town since I've been on the board, so it's great to get a title assigned to you by the zoning regulations in the state, but on the same token, who's got the time to look at it?
Yeah, 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 well, I know Randall has to keep up with the state reporting on stormwater, I know he's always having to do that.
So to wrap it all up, and the only reason I say that is, you know, we're a very desirable community here in Hampshire County, and we've got a good school system, people, you know, want to live in a town like this, but we have to be concerned about all the open space we have in the rural community that we live in, and in order to address some of the things that are going to be coming forward down the road, and they will sooner or later, granted, our infrastructure kind of keeps us in check with a lot of it, but who knows? Down the road, someone may come in, and again, why we want to do the solar bylaws, somebody may come in and want to do acres and acres of a solar field somewhere, and that's using up a lot of land. But a town position and a town coordinator would make it easier on the volunteer boards that don't have the expertise nor the time, because some of this takes more time than a volunteer should be asked to do. And while I'm happy to do what I can do right now, down the road, it might become a little bit too much.
Sure, no, thanks. Couple of questions I have, and I don't know if anybody else is, but the, I know like on, for Conservation Commission, Board of Assessors, members that are on that board or those commissions, even though they're voluntary, there are some recommended, I guess they're stronger than recommended, required, maybe, courses that they're supposed to take, some basic fundamental courses, just to get up to snuff, because they are volunteer boards and they're not necessarily subject experts. I know, Dan, you took the MACC certification or something when you were on the Concom. Is there something like that for Planning Board, for somebody who's on the Planning Board? I know many of you are already engineers or engineer backgrounds, but is there something else?
Yeah, we have two engineers on the board, but yeah, I get communication from PVPC that has, especially, I think it's every year in Worcester, there's a whole day on a Saturday that's devoted to all kinds of topics regarding planning, yeah, absolutely.
So that's the kind of thing that as you're, and you probably already have done this, but as you're looking at your budget and, you know, putting in your figures, I mean, that's one thing that maybe just to be sure you're plugging in, so that you're taking advantage of that, or at least having the money to do it whenever people are available to do it, maybe.
Sure, absolutely.
Just a thought on that one, to get started on that, at least, but I know that's been a challenge, I think, for some committees, to be sure that, you know, everybody gets the required training that they need to at least be knowledgeable enough to ask the right questions during their meetings, yeah.
And to be quite honest with you, you have to have the person that's got the time to do it also, you know, we have some members that have young families and a lot of other time, but...
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
Nope.
Okay, good, yeah, anybody else have questions?
Yeah, Dan? Sure. Oh, I'm sorry.
I believe I speak on behalf of the town when I say, thank you, Paul, for all the effort and time you put in to your work on the Planning Board. I think that's one of the most important points that we can get across here, is how much we appreciate your volunteer time and what you do for our community.
Thank you, Dan.
So let's start by saying thank you.
Thank you.
Good, yeah, and Beth?
Great, yeah, well, let me add on to that. Thank you for many years of service and responding to your request for staff support, more continuity in town building than an on-call consultant. I think it's critically important that we have a person who is multitasked, whether they're primarily in the Conservation Commission realm or Planning Board, it would be shared responsibilities. So when you and Randall prepare to go out and inspect these stormwater systems, as you're required to under the MS4 regulations, do you go to the computer and call up the schedule of inspections and note for March, the 20 inspections that you need to do?
I do not, no.
You say that we have it all on record?
Yes.
What records do you refer to?
I'm referring to the records that the Highway Department has, Randall, that he shared with me years ago. He's got it all on Excel of all the subdivisions or the residences that have been issued a stormwater permit, so it's there.
So the records live over there?
But the inspections do not.
So, and I don't want to embarrass anybody or anything like that, but lack of sufficient personnel or sufficient process in-town meeting resulted in a very uncomfortable experience last week. A simple A and R plan came to the Planning Board for its endorsement, a very ordinary thing, and we don't even approve them, we endorse them, that they nominally comply with dimensional zoning. And familiar citizen, familiar representative, what was not disclosed is this was property enrolled in Chapter 61B, that there was splitting. Having looked at the records, I can imagine how their attorney or their representative would enrich the record, but it was not at all a part of the record at the Planning Board, nor could I or the town clerk find that plan anywhere in town building or in my email. So record-keeping is fundamental to not getting in the pickle that the conservation agent was a couple of weeks ago, because of incomplete records, he got crossfries with another citizen. So record-keeping is terribly boring, onerous, and you have to sort through a lot of mysteries to correct the history. Nothing could be more critical. And who's tracking that kind of an issue?
Well, and I think that's something we can take up, you know, as we keep going on here, and especially as we talk about other topics and not only tonight, in the future.
Well, to issue a cross committee communication.
And we have, there's a couple of relevant people here, but one of the things I've been thinking that that relies on is the, things like the site plan review and all of that. I mean, there is a set of paperwork, which I think, if I'm not correct, on the building side at least, it's still fairly manual, it's not all automated right now, but it should be able to be circulated enough and checked off by the relevant committees, so that that situation doesn't happen. So I, it seems to me that there ought to be a short-term fix, at least, it won't solve the personnel issue necessarily, but maybe we'll hear more about it when Ron comes up, so.
But just to refer to what Stephen said, in previous years, we did not have to have that disclosure before we approved an A and R. We have had it after the A and R has been approved, because then that's the step afterwards where they have to go through to get it taken out of 61, but we've never had a precedent where we need to know that prior to approving or endorsing an A and R.
Okay.
It doesn't so much have implications in the Planning Department, except the Planning Department has the plan to which the assessors need to refer in administering the chapter.
But it seems to me it's a, yeah, some level of a coordination effort, and who gets the first set of papers, and how does it circulate, so that everybody knows what's going on, so.
Last time I understood, there was no paper at town building, so that's one of...
The, just, again, just for your own edification, after we endorse that, the building inspector, the Conservation Commission, and the assessors get the copy of the map that we have approved, so they, it goes to their office, assuming that that triggers something in their office when they see it, but...
I guess the check was in the mail, it was in transit.
Okay.
Before we leave the topic of a, an employee that would focus on the Planning Board, I think there is some action for us, the Select Board, to take to, to maybe allow the Planning Board to investigate that option with maybe teaming with one of our neighboring communities, see if there's any interest for that, such that we could have a shared agent across a couple towns, I don't know, but I think that's, if we want to explore, what I'm asking is for the Select Board's permission to explore the option.
Well, I'm not sure they're going to take it up right tonight, but let's keep it on the agenda. It's something, I know at the Cost efficiencies committee level, we've been talking about sharing resources and trying to look at regionalization kinds of things.
Yeah, but I don't think you need Select Board approval to explore it, because...
I think Board can certainly, you know...
Ultimately, it'll come down to a PRF, and then subject to funding, which...
Yeah, that's a challenge, yeah.
...group or department would have to, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, the obvious, I guess the obvious choice would be Stampton, because they have a Planning Department.
Right, yeah, right, it's a different one, and we, you know, we now have a part-time conservation agent, a few years ago, that was shared with you, Stampton, and that relationship, for whatever reason, didn't work out very well, so we went without one for a while, and now we have our part-time one. So over time, these are things that we have to take a look at more broadly. I think, you know, trying to find the qualified people that we need in many departments, that are especially technically oriented, is definitely a challenge, and you know, if you were to have this magical person that you're describing here, you know, my first thought is, you know, what kind of qualifications would they need? So I think it would be interesting to have further discussion about, you know, what are the kind of qualifications of a person like that, because finding all of that in one person might be kind of tough, too, so, but anyway, so thanks for the input, appreciate it, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, I don't think Brian's here for a zoning Board of Appeals, so let us go on to Housing Authority, Sierra.
Ooh, someone tall was here before me.
Somebody there, like that guy behind you.
Hi, everyone. Sierra Simmons. I'm the Chair of the Housing Authority. So I started my report with a sort of about section, which you all can see. That's really more for the benefit of any public who may be watching. So in the interest of time, I'd ask you if you would like me to go through that ver- verbally or not?
You could summarize it briefly without reading it word for word, maybe.
Sure. So the Housing Authority doesn't currently manage any properties like many housing authorities do, or more of a sort of like research and make things happen group. So our goal is to increase affordable housing in the town of Southampton, and to take the many steps it takes to get there in various ways. And when we talk about affordable housing, we mean both affordable under Chapter 40B, which is affordable by someone who makes 80% of the area median income. And we also are interested in housing that meets the Community Preservation Act's definition of community housing, which is up to, affordable for someone who makes up to 100% of the area median income. And for an example, as of 2023, for a household of one, 80% of the AMI was $58,650 a year for household income, and 100% was $73,300. If you ever want to know more about that, feel free to email me at housingauthority@townofsouthampton.org. So, our priorities for the next six months, first of all, we're working on the property at 354 College Highway, which we bought with Community Preservation Act funds in November 2022. So we're working on RFP for development of probably just one housing unit on this lot. We were looking into two, but it sounds like from conversations with Habitat, that one is going to be more feasible for homeownership. And so we've been in the process of discussing with the two regional sort of nonprofit housing developers, Wayfinders and Pioneer Valley Habitat for Humanity. Wayfinders doesn't do projects that small, but Habitat does, and their board voted provisional interest. They said they would need at least a five-year window to get it done, and they did want us to clear up a few unknowns before they were ready to respond to an RFP. So right now, what we're working on is clearing up those unknowns. Those include unclear property boundaries on the north side, which need to be resurveyed, and Ed is definitely in the process of helping me get that resurvey done. And then there's the curb cut permitting, which I've been working with Randall to figure out if there's an actual real curb cut there or not. And perk tests, they were a little concerned when they looked at the perk test. They said it may be an extra costly septic installation, but they didn't know how to, or they weren't able to commit funds to find that out because there wasn't a project that they were engaged in yet. So it's really in our best interest to sort of figure that out before we put out the RFP. And so I talked to a septic engineer and got some advice, and basically, we're hoping to spend some of the, so there's a bit of CPA funds left from the request after the cost of buying the property, and that's specifically for sort of preparing the property to be developable. And so we're hoping to use that for the survey and then also to do a septic design, which is about $2,000 or something like that, really not that much, just so we can give them a sense of how much it's going to cost. And really, we want to make the RFP amenable to them because Habitat's pretty much the only organization that's likely to bid on it. It's not really a money-making prospect, so it's really only going to be a nonprofit, and they're the ones. So that's what we're working on. So our other biggest priority is partnering with other boards and committees. I've noticed in this small town, you can do a lot more with each other with support than you can by yourself, especially the Housing Authority, who doesn't have a whole lot of authority. And so, as some of you Select Board members may be familiar with, we have the Affordable Housing Trust Bylaw in place, and now we're in the recruitment process. And that has been a little bit of struggle to get those five trustees in place. And so it's really in the Housing Authority's best interest to support you all with that recruitment effort. So please tell us any actions we can take to help you publicize it. And when I get to my wish list, I'm going to give it some effort right there. And also, as Paul mentioned, we want to revisit the 40R mixed-use overlay district idea. So a 40R district was identified in our 2022 Housing Production Plan as a key strategy. And it's basically, 40R is a dense residential or mixed-use smart growth zoning district that includes affordable housing units in areas of concentrated development. And so in 2012, the Planning Board and PVPC initiated a 40R application for the Highway District from Red War Rock shops down to like Pizano's area. But this application never moved forward due to barriers like lack of infrastructure, which we're all very familiar with, septic, sewage, et cetera. So we're hoping to work with the Planning Board to just review those barriers, benefits, and next steps that were identified in 2012, and reevaluate whether they're still insurmountable or if there's something we can do at this point. You know, it's been 12 years, might as well check it out again, see what the latest is. How this will make the town better? Well, we're in the middle of a national massive housing crisis. Massachusetts is having a major housing shortage. We're one of the most expensive states to live in. People are leaving, and rent's too high. Everyone knows this. And so, I mean, it feels like the things we're doing are very small scale. You know, we have like a one-unit owner homeownership thing. We have this 40R pie in the sky that we're like climbing this massive hill to get to. But these are really the most viable options we have to increase our affordable housing stock in town and work toward that 40B 10% requirement. So this is kind of the best we've got at this point.
What's our percentage now of affordable?
It is under 2%. I believe it was 1.6 or 1.8 last time we checked.
Okay, so we've got a ways to go.
We've got quite a ways to go. And just in case anybody thinks affordable housing only benefits low-income families, it really benefits the whole community. In the same way that you might invest in your school, even if you don't have children, affordable housing provides a stable and safe environment for families to sort of lift themselves up out of poverty. You know, you can't get a job and, you know, send your kids to school and do anything if you don't have a safe place to live first. So it's a super key first step and just like upward mobility for people. It's also, if you want people to work here, you know, those people need to be able to afford to live here. So it provides local employers with workforce, which you all know we need. And not only that, but like many of us who are living in, you know, relative comfort are just sort of like one accident or illness away from destitution, not to get doom and gloom about it. But you never know what's going to happen to you or your grandma or your grandkids, and when you might need affordable housing yourself or someone you love might. So, really key thing. If we could wave a magic wand and change anything, it would be more residents volunteering to help with the Housing Authority and the Housing Trust. Woo! As I mentioned, we have a lot of open seats on the Housing Trust. We really need people, and the Housing Authority has one open seat.
I think there's four on the trust, if I'm, is one?
Four on the trust. I think one is Joy.
One from Select Board and four others.
Yes.
So four residents are solicited to be on the trust.
And you don't need to be a deeply expert person to do this. You just need to care and have time to commit to this. You know, there's trainings you can take. It's really just takes someone's time and effort. Most of the government boards here take a lot more time and effort than they take expertise. They just need someone to give a heck. And so highly invite anyone and everyone in town to please reach out. You can reach out to the Select Board, or you can reach out to me at housingauthority@townofsouthampton.org. But I do want to say that the people who do volunteer their time on like 20 different boards and are supporting us, we are so, so grateful to the people who are. This is not to negate the hard work that the people are doing. We would just love, love, love some more support from volunteers.
Very good. Thanks. Yeah, and just to say too, we do have it advertised, we've got to update it actually, but we've had the trust advertised on the town website, but we need to update that.
And I have been following this with interest ever since you presented it at Town Meeting. It was adopted, but still, could you, in a few words, distinguish the role of the Housing Authority from the trust? What is it that you needed the trust to do? And so what skills?
Sure, absolutely.
Give it a heck, but a little bit more.
Give it a heck, but a little bit more. Well, it has more to do about the powers of the trust than who's on the trust, honestly. So Housing Trust is able to purchase property themselves. So one of our best bets in a small town like this for building affordable housing is not that there's going to be some developer who's going to magically come in and develop a massive apartment building that's like not even allowed here. It's more likely that we're going to be able to like convert existing properties to affordable housing. And that's something that is within our powers and within, you know, our budgetary things. But one of the challenges to that is every time something goes on the market, it gets bought before we can get CPA funds and go through Town Meeting. So several times we've been sort of, our efforts have been quelled by the inability to jump on a sale when it comes up. And that is really the key thing that the Housing Trust can do, is they can act fast and be nimble when it comes to purchasing.
They have the authority to purchase, but where do their funds come from if not requiring Town Meeting action?
So their funds can come from several sources, but the first place we're going to get funds for the Housing Trust is the Community Preservation Act funds. So we have like four, some 400,000 some odd dollars in the housing bucket of community preservation funds. And that's been collecting for years and years and sort of sitting there and waiting for people to use it. We were able to use, you know, 120,000 for this one property, but that was, there's still 440-something left in there. Don't quote me on that exact number. So the CPC, even before I was on the CPC, the former chair of the CPC and members indicated strong support of transferring a large sum of that money into the Housing Trust. We just need to establish the trust first before we can do that. So the trust would kick off with a few hundred thousand dollars. And then there's other ways you can get it. For example, the Inclusionary Zoning Bylaw, there's an lieu of payment you can pay. So Inclusionary Zoning says if you're going to build 10 housing units, one of them has to be affordable. It's a 10% rule. But another option is if you don't want to do that, you can pay the town the value of what building that affordable house would have been. And so that hasn't happened yet, and, but if and when that does happen, that in lieu of payment could go into the Housing Trust. There's also various like other ways you can do it, but those are the two sort of most promising.
And we passed the Housing, Housing Trust Bylaw, I believe, in end of '22 probably. So it's been a whole year now where we haven't gotten really going here. So we need to go back and look at all the parameters of the Housing Trust Bylaw and get that in place and put that out. We've got information, and thank you for updating some of the stuff I'm seeing on the Housing Authority webpage that I'm just looking at. I see a picture of the property at 354, so thank you.
I had a lot of fun updating the new website.
Glad somebody's using the website. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any questions for Sierra? No? Thank you. Great presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sierra.
All right. All right, next one. Combination, Building Department and Tree Warden. Ron Lauren.
Glasses here.
Take your, take your pick, whichever one you want to do first.
I can do the Tree Warden one first. It's short and sweet. Ron Lauren, I'm the Tree Warden in Southampton. This year, I didn't do much of a, much of a report. I kept it short and sweet. Last year, I did probably too much of a report, so. The only activities that I have to report so far is one tree, let's see, current activities, one tree on East Street scheduled for removal this week, or actually, it'll be next week now because they can't get a police detail this week, so. And then the other tree is scheduled is on Crooked Ledge. It's a pretty good-sized pine tree. That one's coming down as well. It's very, very dead. But like I said, it was, it was going to happen this week. I guess the police details are harder and harder to come up with now, so. Anyway. Budget spending, I started out with 15,000. I'm down to 10,650, which is good. I think we're probably going to come in under budget this year. It hasn't been as crazy as other winters where we've had a lot of storm damage and stuff, so. And then the other thing that's helping out is EverSource has taken a lot of the hazard trees down over the last five or six years, which they've covered the cost of that, which is huge, huge advantage, you know, beneficial to Southampton. They're, I think they're scheduled, they're going to do some more cutting on Walco, on, not Walco, on Manhan, Manhan Road, which is pretty rough out there, but EverSource will be covering the cost to take all those down eventually.
Could you say more about that, please?
About, about Manhan Road?
Manhan Road.
So there's, so there's some telephone poles that need to be moved. They're in the back right now.
They've got to go to a Planning Board hearing first.
Yeah, we're going to have a tree hearing at some point. But the current situation there is the poles are behind the houses, and I don't believe, from what I've been told, they hadn't a legal, I don't believe they had an easement to be back there. This happened without an easement. So the reason why now they want, they have to move the poles is because of trespass issues. So, yeah, so it's basically.
I think there's, that story is getting murkier every time it's told.
Well, it's going to be, EverSource is up to them to come before the Planning Board. They know that they have to. They came for a hearing here, and we've turned them back to Planning Board because that is designated as a scenic road in town. So you have to have all that permission done first, so.
Yeah, so that falls under, that falls under Planning Board.
I think their trespass issue is limited to one landowner, not serious landowner.
Yeah. So, so anyway, that, I don't, I don't think that hearing's been scheduled yet. I haven't seen anything, but I assume it's going to happen sooner or later. But again, like I said, it's going to be.
Don't let them take chainsaws out there.
Well, there is a lot of dead trees on Manhan, so I'm sure you've heard about them, but. Anyway, so yeah, the budget's good. And then the only, let's see, the only trees that have been removed so far is Pomeroy Meadow, Miller Ave, and Pleasant Street. So that's it as far as the Tree Warden report goes.
All right, all right.
And then, let's see, the Building Inspector report's a little bit longer, so bear with me. I can kind of read it, read it right through this report, just kind of go through.
Go ahead. We don't have a copy of it, Ron's.
Yeah, okay. So the current, the Building Department consists of me as the Building Inspector, Electrical and Plumbing Inspector, and then we have our volunteer Art, who I think most of you know. He's done a tremendous amount of work over the years, you know, unpaid volunteer. So we're lucky to have Art, and hopefully he'll continue to do what he does. The daily activities of the Building Department is processing building permit applications and plan reviews, conducting inspections, answering zoning and building code questions, and investigating zoning complaints. Currently, we have nine, we have nine houses under construction in Southampton at various stages. When I say this year, it's also, it's, it's, it's calendar year. It's not, we're not talking about fiscal, so. We've issued eight certificate of vacancies this year.
So this is since January?
Since January, yeah, as far as the building permits go. Let's see, no, no, currently, we don't really have any pending house starts, so. Things have definitely, they've slowed down as far as new house, new home construction. So right now, I mean, I've been hearing chatter of a couple houses probably in the springtime out on Gil Farm, which is the, well, we have two, two, two empty, well, not completely empty, but we have Gil Farm, which is pretty empty as far as availability of building lots. We continue to increase awareness of online, online building permit applications, which is, we're about 95% of the permits are coming in online now, which is, is good for, for the applicants, and it's good for us as well. We're up to date with our 304 restaurant inspections, which you, you all know because that's, you issued a liquor license based on that. So that was me and the fire chief that have to conduct those. The biggest thing we have going right now is the, I'm basically working in conjunction with the Board of Health, and we're going through the multifamily housing units in town, the bigger ones. And we've been conducting joint inspections, and basically, the point of the inspection is to just confirm compliance with life, life safety codes, meaning egresses and smoke detectors. That's intercoms for, for safety purposes, stuff like that. So that's turned into a pretty time-consuming because there's a lot of re-inspections, and so it's, it's going well. I'm doing that with, Charlie Kneiki is involved with that. He's, he's very knowledgeable as far as housing codes, so. Budget spending, we're continuing to remain on, within our budget, which we will. And then as far as calendar year, year building permits issued, this year- year we've actually issued 330 residential permits, or not, I shouldn't say this year, from '23, '24 was 330 versus '22, '23, we did 325 residential. So there's been a slight increase.
That's all sorts of building permits. That is not a new house.
Exactly. The majority of the permits coming in these days is solar and weatherization. Those are the two biggest components. New, new houses is definitely down. Even additions and additions are down. Kitchen renovations, bathrooms, those are pretty consistent. So. But then again, I mean, revenues increased as well this year versus last year for the, for the first quarter by, so we're up about $3,000. So, so yeah, it, it seems like it's a little slower, but actually it's not as far as the numbers are concerned. See. Again, I went over our staff already, but we have Tommy Sears as Plumbing Inspector, Jim Fisher as Electrical, and then myself and Art. Plans for the next four to six months, we're going to be reviewing the, the permit fees to see where we're at in comparison to other towns. There's a few, few areas that can probably.
Right. We've just acted on the electrical ones.
The electrical, yeah.
That's been dealt with, yeah.
Which, yeah. So the electrical ones have gone up. We're going to have to address that with our online permit software. So Art's, Art's looking into that at this point because he's very technical. But.
And you'll get him posted on the website, too.
Right, exactly. So that's, that's another goal is website revisions. We've, you know, that we, now that we've transitioned over to the new website, we'd have a few items that we're going to be adding to the Building Department website. And let's see, we're transitioning into the Massachusetts 10th Edition Codebook, which probably doesn't mean a lot to you, you folks, but a lot of the 10th Edition is going to be increased energy codes, stuff like that. Solar ready roofs, charging stations in the garages for electrical vehicles, electric vehicles. So we haven't, we haven't seen the codebook yet, but you know, the state's still, still reviewing it and tweaking it. And then the only other thing I have is suggested tools, resource, resources, increased integration of online permitting with other departments. That's kind of, I don't know, that's more of a wish list. I don't, I don't know. You know, that's kind of outside of my, my ability. But it would, I mean, other towns have software where it pulls all the different departments in and allows, like the, the Highway Department, if, you know, if it's a new house, the Highway Department could sign off on the driveway permits right online. And then the software in other towns doesn't allow you to issue a permit until all the, all of the stuff has been reviewed and logged into the computer.
You know what the name of the software program is?
I mean, I'm talking about Munis right now, which is way, way above Southampton. I mean, there's got to be smaller versions, but like Westfield has Munis. Munis is, it's geared towards larger cities. I mean, but I think there, there should be something else maybe a little less technical.
I was just wondering if it would be an extra module on what you already have?
I think that's what it could be. Yeah, it could be added to what we are, what we're already using in the Building Department, where the other departments could kind of share use of that. And then like right now, the assessors actually do have use of it. They, they don't have a replacement yet for the last assessor as far as I know. But back when Martha was here, she was utilizing the, that, that part of our software. So she would review, review applications and then, and they're actually, they're on, they're on, they're on the building card too. So they go out and they'll, they'll do the final inspection with me too. So, but I think it could be automated. Just like I said, we have the, we have the tech committee in town. So, you know, that might be something.
I would think Art would be a good person because he's on that committee. So, yeah, maybe in his background, I think he would find it interesting.
Yeah, definitely. I just, we'll have to see what Art thinks about that. But.
I guess I shouldn't sign up, sign Art up for things.
Right. But no, that software would also include like Conservation Planning Board, Board of Health, Fire Department, because they do plan reviews too.
Water Department.
Water Department, exactly. So.
Already has a license for software that probably deserved their purposes. Already has a water system application sitting on top of ArcGIS.
Yeah, that'd be great.
To have shared property database among these departments. We may already own a portion of what it takes.
Right. Yeah, that'd be great. I mean, that's, it's good because there's, they have, the Water Department signs off if there's, if there's, you know, if there's no well, if it's town water, the Water Department signs off to basically guarantee that there's potable water. If, if it's on well, then the Board of Health signs off. The wells have to go in before the house is built. So.
I believe they know where every pipe and valve is in the ground in that computer.
In that computer, right.
So they know the roads to get to the pipes and there's a lot of.
Lot of stuff in there.
A big foundation from which to build.
Yeah. And I mean, I keep saying Art, but he's actually over at the Water Department now volunteering over there too. So.
I'll make sure to bring that up for the next Technology Committee meeting.
Yeah. I mean, I know you, I know you, I know you've had a lot of big projects, but now maybe you've won some of the bigger projects down. Some smaller stuff can get looked at. And then that's, that's about it. And then just, just to kind of bounce off what Paul was saying, as far as a land use committee or something like that, I think that'd be a great idea. I know that they used to do the land, land use meetings in the past, but so it'd be good if we all kind of.
Must be a while ago.
It was a while ago. It was before my tenure.
Okay.
So that's, that's about it as far as I have for my formal report. So if you've got any questions.
Anybody have any questions? Yeah.
Two questions, Ron.
Yeah.
The, the 300 plus permits issued, not for new houses.
Yeah.
Is there a, a process in place where that information makes it to the assessors so that they're able to adjust tax records or assessments?
I got all of that information from Bradley. The, the number, the revenue, the.
Well, like you issue a permit to remodel a kitchen.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. The assessors get all of that information now. So that's all.
And then my, my second question, and you may not be the right person to ask, but I should have asked it earlier. Is there, is there something currently on the books in Southampton where a single parcel of X size that has a house on it could build a second standalone house on it or apartment?
Like an ADU, like an accessory dwelling unit like North Hampton's doing? I, I know that Paul.
Zoning bylaws, yeah.
ADUs, have we approved those yet?
That's in our plan.
It's, it's already approved?
It has to be refined. So they didn't put it in the bylaws.
So when you, when you say has to be refined, if somebody wanted to move forward with a proposal, could they do it now or would it get held up?
No, they can do it now.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I mean, the only challenge with those is, you know, like, like everybody says, septic and, you know, now you're adding, you're adding additional bedrooms, which would probably require a new, new perk test, new design, all of that stuff. I mean, that's our biggest, that's our biggest constraint in Southampton is, you know, septic. And that's what it is. But, but yeah.
Good. All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it. Yeah. Good to have the update. All right. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Just to expand on what John just asked, in that accessory bylaw we have right now, it's, it has to be attached to an existing residence.
It's not a standalone.
Also can't be a standalone.
But that's why we're going to revise it because a lot of the rules and regs en masse now that are encouraging more and more of these is to have it in a standalone. In other words, in a barn or a garage that's not, not attached to the main building. So that's, that's a lot to consider because right now it is not allowed. So when we revise those, that will be looked into.
Okay.
Furthermore, and having a conversation with the Board of Health last year, we have, I wouldn't say a lot, but there's several properties in town right now that are pre-existing non-conforming building lots. And to address maybe some of the affordable housing concerns, Board of Health tells me a minimum of a half acre on a, on a one or two bedroom home. Now, it would have to probably be on town water because a small lot like that wouldn't be past muster for septic in, in the, the well, et cetera. So there's, there's several lots in town that are currently pre-existing non-conforming small lots that someone could put a smaller house on, one or two bedroom. And that's something we're looking into as well.
Okay. Good to know. Very good. Thank you. All right. Well, thanks, everyone. Much appreciate the updates.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Paul. Thanks, Ron.
Yep. Thanks for making the effort for our postponed and rescheduled meeting. All right. All right. Next up, reports. Ed, Town Administrator Report.
Sure. And just to let you know that following up on actually one of the topics Ron was talking about.
Sure.
Is that Paul Demon did send me an email and let me know that Eversource had finally reached out to the Planning Board regarding what they needed to do to get, for information in front of the Planning Board and that Richard Harris had put together basically bullet points for what they would have to provide for him. So Eversource has finally reached out to the Planning Board to, to at least garner the information they need to file for a public hearing for Manhan Road.
Okay.
Just to let you know, the perk tests were done at 89 Clark Street this afternoon for the potential site of a new senior center. The perk rates looked very promising for supporting a senior center facility with a commercial kitchen. The appraisal for the 89 Clark Street property has been ordered and is expected to be back to the town by March 15th. Is that right?
Yeah, that would be right. Yeah.
The appraisal for Zero College Highway property of the approximately 4.2 acre parcel and the approximately one acre commercial parcel for consideration for citing the public safety facility has been ordered and is expected to be back to the town in five to six weeks. We did receive the air quality testing reports to the fire station and the FEMA trailer next to it today. The federal election primary will be held on March 5th, 2024. And we have, have the fully executed contract for the Vadar financial software conversion back from Vadar. Vader has already been working with Gen Day and our Assessor's Office for the conversion of the billing of our motor vehicle excise tax, which the first commitment is being ready to be processed and mailed. The town did receive an extension from the Department of Local Services, DLS, to file our Schedule A without a penalty. So the Hampshire Regional Quarterly Assessment Payment was released and paid on the warrant when it would normally have been paid. The Police Department has one opening for a full-time police officer, but has several applicants who are being interviewed. Chief Illingsworth, Randall Kemp, Highway Superintendent, and I met with a representative of Eversource on County Road last Friday morning in regards to the telephone pole, which has been hit by vehicles three times in the last two months. The foreman from Eversource took several options regarding this pole back to their engineering team and Eversource has offered to place a guardrail in front of this pole. Randall Kemp is working with Eversource regarding the specifications needed for that guardrail. And then to let you know, Bradley Oxon, Town Accountant, and Scott Dreback, Town Administrator, will be taking part in the DLS Financial Forecast Training to be held in Palmer at the police station on February 29th. And then upcoming Select Board meetings are February 27th and in March, the 12th and the 26th.
At this point in time.
And there's a hand up down to your right.
Probably, probably a couple more coming up. But yes, John.
So I hadn't even flipped this over. I can't tell you how excited I am on letter J.
I figured you wouldn't be. It was a surprise, John.
Yeah. I look forward to the results from that.
According to Ed, this is like the first time they've actually offered this training in a long time.
And probably about, I don't know, at least six months ago, they had sent out a survey. And I had completed the survey and they had asked in there if, you know, your town would happen to be interested in taking part of this. And I had checked yes. So they actually, in addition to the email, they actually called the follow-up because I had checked that. It wasn't the greatest timing in the world due to the transition, but.
No, I, I think it's great in the fact it's in Western Mass is even better.
Yeah.
The, the other two questions that I just made a clarification on, on letter I, just for those listening at home, so we don't have a run on guardrails. The, the expenses associated with that guardrail would be borne by Eversource?
That is correct. And it was, it was interesting because we went out and looked at some options of, okay, could the pole be moved back at all? It was, it might have been able to be moved back maybe four feet at the most because it's right at basically the edge of the right of way. They looked at actually moving the pole to the other side of the road, which might have taken two poles. Randall actually asked the representative while we were out there straight away if they would, you know, be willing to foot the cost of the guardrail. They said no. The foreman went back and went to the engineering team and they laid, they laid it out and looked at the different options and said, you know, our best option is, and, and they got back to us, we were still together. So they got back to us, I bet you within an hour or an hour and a half, and said, we will pay for the guardrail. And then Randall's actually working with an engineering firm just to make sure we have the correct specs for that.
And then my last question is, we received the air quality test reports back. Did we read the test results?
I don't know. Did we? I've read mine. Have you read yours?
They just came in this afternoon about 2:30.
No. I have, I have briefed through mine. I want to.
Do we, do we have, I didn't check my email.
They're on email.
Yeah. You have it electronically.
Yep.
I, I already have a couple of questions and, and they're mostly clarity. You know, for me, I, there, there doesn't seem to be any issues at all with the FEMA trainer, trailer. And I just want to follow up and make sure because it really isn't mentioned, which my assumption is there was nothing, you know, no issues there or whatever. But I wanted to clarify that to make sure. And most of the issues do seem to be, shall we say, in the roof ceiling of the building. There's a couple other ones there, you know, recommending a new door be put in between the bays and the office area that seals tightly. There's some mortar, mortar work that you'll see in the photos that, you know, by, I will say, that side door entrance and actually on that corner out towards that first garage bay that's closest to Town Hall, you'll see that. But yeah, you do have, you do have that electronically now.
Okay.
And they did also send it to the fire chief.
Right. That's great. Yeah. No, and I think just back on the forecasting training. So both Bradley and then Scott to attend, and it's actually in Palmer. So that's even good for him. That's hometown. But the bad thing about it is that that's Ed's last day. So that's one less day of overlap. But in the long run, I think having some, some exposure to DLS and financial forecasting will be a good, good thing for us going forward. So timing in some ways is good.
And just to let you know, they are holding it at the police station. And not only for Southampton, but any attendees, if they don't pass, they're staying there.
There we go. All right. Good. Okay. How about a couple of, yeah, I'm sorry.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
Let me be positive. I'm delighted to see item C, that there's an appraisal contracted for Zero College Highway.
For the public safety. Yeah.
I'm wondering what happened to the direction given to Town Administrator in January before the Joint Boards meeting to solicit and bring to this board proposals for appraising the hall.
We will come to that under the agenda item.
Under the agenda, we've got it on here. It's on here, on the agenda.
It is, although there's available money for the public safety building purposes, I think it is wasteful of time and financial resources to proceed this way. We'll come back to it.
We'll come back to it. There's, there's only so much that the Public Safety Building Committee can, can act on, obviously. And the money's coming from their budget. So.
We have a larger, larger agreement as the board selects.
We'll come back to it on the agenda. Okay. Select Board Reports. Dan, anything?
Well, we heard from Planning Boards, so nothing more to add there. And Technology Committee will be meeting soon. And it looks like we have a new action take up.
Yeah. You mean maybe next week or the week after? I forget. Okay.
It's on, it's on my town.
Yeah. Okay. Very good. Yeah. That's it? Well, Housing, they were here too. So.
True.
You're still part of that, right?
Yes.
Okay. Good. All right. Stephen, yeah?
Sorry, ditto. Planning Board has reported.
Stephen, yeah?
Sorry, ditto. Plan Board has reported. Board Health has been spoken for, or will be in order to agenda.
On the agenda, yep.
There are multifamily systems that are failing in town, and that's a concern. Conservation Commission. After failing to meet in January, we had a February meeting, and we have very full agenda for March. Key issues are the status of my appointment.
Yep. Well, and at this point in time, I think if Joy is back, so she's been, she had been the liaison, so assuming she wants to continue that, we have to check that. I don't want to speak for Joy, but we should continue that. At this point in time, Brittany told me that they actually do have a quorum because Kathleen is back now too, so I think, I think they're good for a bit. However, they're just at the fore is their quorum, and so I think we need to think about that again. Well, I think they are actively recruiting, but, and they tend to do their, from what I know of CONCOM, they tend to do some preliminary discussions with any interested candidates and so forth, and they do a little bit more, kind of getting to know you a little bit more than some committees do, I think. So what was I going to say? So where they could fall short of a quorum is if one of them is out sick or something like that. So with Joy on her way back, I'd like to at least explore with her first if she wants to still at least be the liaison, but if she were willing to be reappointed.
Is not available to make quorum? I know Diana Fetterman is an alternate and pretty regular. Can't make a quorum with an alternate.
She's an associate, associate member. Associate member, I think, I think you can't.
Not alternate, all right.
Yeah. So anyway, so we'll take that up. I'll get, I'll get in touch and with Joy before, before too long, over the next week or two. Before, you know, the next meeting or two and just see, but before their next meeting, we'll know for sure one way or another. We'll have our meeting.
It's early in the morning.
Their, their meeting is marked, right? And so we'll have another meeting before that, and we can make another appointment if we need to do that.
And they're scheduling site visits. They're active between meetings.
Good. Okay.
I think that's, okay.
Good. All right. John?
PPP met earlier tonight. We'll take up everything that we took action on later in the, the agenda. Finance will be meeting, is going to try and meet next week or the week after on the 29th, and they haven't met since our last update. And Norris, or the local school committee met last night. We took up a very, very, very preliminary Norris budget, and we'll be looking to get that back. We, I need to work, get with the Town Administrator later tonight just to clarify in writing timelines and expectations of the budgets. Even if we give them the latest possible date, I, I don't necessarily see the budgets coming in. So they, they asked, you know, what is the latest timeline we could do? I told them, you know, the vote's on May 7th, and I don't know how many days, in my mind, I thought it was 28 days we have to post publicly before the warrant. So I said, you know, it's April 7th or sooner, and.
Our, our bylaws say that all the information needs to be to the Finance Committee by April 1st.
Yeah. So I can, I can tell them that. I just wouldn't hold your breath that you're going, that we're going to get that. So, which Norris did reaffirm its annual vote to continue to participate in school choice, but we held off until next month to allow the building principal to come forward with a recommendation of the number of seats. It will act on that. The, we, we got positive updates from our building principal that she had a very successful time with our Town Administrator and working on the security upgrade, RFP or RFQ, as well as, I understand he was on-site to do a personal inspection of the van to make sure that.
Both vans.
It's, yeah. So we appreciate all that going forward. Which brings me to Central Office or Hampshire Regional and the ADC Committee, which is the All District Committee, is moving, they're meeting tonight as well at 6 o'clock. Potentially, there's two items on the agenda tonight. One is to enter into a contract with a firm to assist in selecting the next superintendent, and then the other item is to take up a recommendation from the outgoing business administrator on game plan for the next 18 months for Central Office that will allow them to close out 2022 and 2023 and then work on 2024's budget. I'll give you the highlights. It's, there's a $750,000 increase in order to accommodate his request. And quick math, Southampton's 56% of that bill. So I believe that's all I have for updates.
I think at one point, when we went to the, maybe we'll take it up later, but when we went to the, the joint meeting, it looked like there might be just a 3% increase in the overall.
That's just the high school.
For the high school, yeah.
Yeah. 3.18 level, level service, not level funded, with two eliminations of positions, but the, at least my reading, that was preliminary.
Preliminary budget, so very first.
And it was not the highest, they were clear that that was not going to be their highest budget because nowhere in there that I could see, and I asked the question, they didn't answer it, were, were any potential accommodations for contract settlement.
Right. Yep. So that's a big one. So yeah, we'll come back around to it briefly if we want to say more on that. Good. Anything else? That's it? All right. Good. Just a couple from me, I guess. What have we got here? So Council on Aging, the Board of Council on Aging met recently and basically spent time looking over their budget, just a status review on their budget, is also clarifying what they were going to be asking for in their 25 budget. They had their first memory café under the new grant facility they got, and that was very well attended with Sarah the Fiddler being a huge hit as usual.
Yeah, there wasn't a parking place to be found around here.
There was hardly a parking space around. Quite true. She's always very good. And so that was a good success, and they were going to have a Mardi Gras event on Tuesday, and then with the fake snow day, they postponed it, so I believe that's going to be this coming Tuesday. So things are.
They had a parade.
Yeah, really. Things are, things are moving along there anyway. And let's see. Senior Center Building Committee also met, and they were talking primarily two or three things, looking at a soil study that Mark Donald from the Public Safety Building Committee was kind enough to put together that looked at the soils on 89 Clark to see what the potential was there, just to give a, an overview, taking some information on the USDA maps and so forth, and put together an informative report there as to what that whole parcel was going to look like. And then talked about the need to actually engage someone to do the perk test, which as Ed has pointed out, that actually has already happened, so that's great, and if it's a good result, that's even better. And then probably the other item that they spent time talking about was three or four people had gone to a site visit of the recently built, couple-year-old Hadley Senior Center, and had a tour there and had a very engaging discussion, and probably the, one of the biggest things that came out was the amount of storage and how well thought out all the little details are. I've never seen so many in-ground, you know, in-floor electric connections and so forth. I mean, in every room, there were multiple and storage for just about everything. So there's a lot of, you know, interesting little tweaks to a design that I think would be good food for thought going forward. So that was very informative. Public Safety Building Committee also met and went over, had a letter from the appraisers and went through an offer for the appraisal cost on that.
Did you see a presser?
This is Crowley.
Crowley and Associates.
Crowley and Associates.
Crowley.
And then we do have now a, I guess I would call it a non-binding offer from, from the landowners on that property, which we will be dealing with, I guess, at some point.
An offer from the seller to the town.
Right. And then spent most of the time actually with the design consultant, HKT, looking at what a one-story public safety complex would look like with a couple of different views and designs, and basically tried to look at that and, and give them the go-ahead to take one of those designs and keep on moving with further design work on that, and also talked about things like some of the other engineering necessities that would be there, HVAC, green design kinds of things. Were all part of the discussion that happened that day. So they're, they're moving ahead. The, the consultants are really wanting to move forward and keep, keep us on track, and everybody's still got the deadlines of the May Town Meeting in mind to go on both of those committees. Cost efficiencies, we're scheduling a meeting. It's either going to be the 21st or the 28th. I'm waiting for a couple of responses on that. And then the last thing, I spent most of my time actually working, the, I think I told you the Mouse Trails grant had gone in a couple of weeks ago. I think the Fire Chief Anderson and I have gone through and done the final reviews on the Assistance to Firefighters grant. So there'll be a request for the tanker, which is somewhere around $670,000, I believe, and a request for replacing our SCBA air packs, which is about $230,000-some thousand. And of that, the town's share would only be 5% of that, so combined, it's going to be about $43,000 altogether. That would be our share of that whole thing. So those are basically ready to go, and so I'll come down, and Bradley's got to be one of the ones that pushes the magical button and signs it because it's a federal application. So I'll work on that tomorrow and get those in.
Do you know if, do they specify any dates on when awards may be given?
I think, I think it doesn't take too long to get the award. I think probably three or four months to get the award, but then, you know, actually ordering something is, you know, getting a, getting a tanker is probably two years out.
I just want, I wonder if, if it makes sense for us to make a little side note instead of trying to find that $43,000 in the budget, you know, one-time debt exclusion with the understanding, we're getting $700,000 that would normally go on long-term debt as a placeholder, ready.
I, I can get more information in terms of when that's going to be announced, but I'm not sure. Yeah, I mean, it all depends on whether we, you know, get it or not, but we could put in a contingency, you know, or conditional kind of thing. I mean, there's some money, I'm sure, in ARP at some point, but Ed knows.
I know, but I, I think, you know, just to be ready, and we can always pull it and not act on it.
Yeah, possible.
But I have a feeling I'm about to be told no.
The hard part with a debt exclusion is going to be the timing, and, I mean.
What's coming up?
Well, you can, you can do it possibly as a, as a borrowing and not a debt exclusion, and this wouldn't become an issue, but if you do it as a debt exclusion, that ballot vote for, that follows up the town meeting vote or a special town meeting vote, my memory is, has to take place either within 90 or 120 days, so.
So that might be a little tricky, but yeah, we'll.
Yeah. Or, or, or you can flip it, I'll check on this, you might be able to flip it around and actually have the ballot vote and then follow up with a town meeting vote that doesn't have that timeline, but I will, I will double-check on that for you.
Yeah, let's check on that, just to have that information, that would be good to know. Okay. I think that's it for reports, so let's keep on the moving here. Do we, I don't see any appointments.
The assessors.
I know, I'm getting on the agenda.
In, in the audience.
Getting on the agenda.
I didn't want to omit my responsibilities.
I know they're here. I just want to just, they're, they're early on the agenda, so I'm going to get here. No appointments and resignations that I know of? Yeah, that we have from PQB. Okay. So first quickie thing, the, from Lucy, the presidential primary warrant. We need to sign this apparently for the March 5th.
Correct.
Presidential primary, right? So that's a document that we need to sign, that we have to approve this, or do we have to approve it or just sign it?
Technically.
It says signing. I mean, I don't know.
Well, technically it's signing. The reason I didn't put it under signing is I, because this, this is the copy from over, from Tuesday's meeting, and the offices would have been open, so I expected Lucy to be here. So I said, rather than putting it later on the agenda for just the signing, I moved it up to here. So technically, it's just a signing. You do not have to approve it.
Okay. So this is basically to cast votes, so it's basically to be able to post this?
Yes. Make it legal.
It's basically the warrant for the presidential primary, presidential preference primaries, which will be March 5th from 7:00 in the morning to 8:00 PM, okay? And it's to cast your vote for presidential preference for, and for the Commonwealth State Committee man and for the Commonwealth State Committee woman and the Southampton Town Committee, I believe. Something along those lines.
I believe in elections and I encourage all voters, all eligible voters to register and participate.
Come on out. Yes, exactly. So March 5th, that'll be the day. So this is just the warrant to post it. All right. Well, can we do the second one quickly, or do you want to reverse? I don't mind.
Go ahead and reverse.
Okay. With no objection, we'll take up the assessor's update. Do we have any update to?
No, that other item might take a while.
Update to discuss?
Hello, Cindy Palmer, 71 Glendale Road, Member of the Board of Assessors. We had scheduled a joint meeting with a quorum for the non-snow, snow day on Tuesday, and unfortunately, the chair is not able to be here on a Thursday evening. Someone's going to get me. So I believe, as I understand this, we, we were advised by the Select Board to, you know, consider gathering some information about the possibility of another way to approach the hiring or the utilization of a principal assessor. And I, I spoke to our Town Administrator, and we would need to file a request for proposal to get it from another firm. We haven't done that for a whole variety of reasons, probably. It would have to be posted by, by our Town Administrator, and I think in the meantime, we did some research. I, I was the primary researcher. I made calls to a few different towns. I did not get calls back from many towns because the town offices are, you know, limited hours. I put in requests via email, I love voicemails. If I call a town that already uses an outside firm and I call the assessor's office, I get them. So I don't get really an objective evaluation from somebody else. One town I did speak to, I did speak to their long-term assessor, and they had used one of the firms that was mentioned last time. I'm not going to name the town, nor am I going to name the person. You're going to have to accept that I actually did this in that I just don't think it's fair to, you know, mention this town. But they didn't have any positive things to say about that particular firm, and they gave me all kinds of examples, this woman who had been an assessor for greater than 40 years, and she gave me all kinds of examples of the, the difficulties they ran into. And that particular town, which has just a bit more than our current population, you know, felt very strongly about having, you know, kind of a presence in the office and a principal assessor. They still use consultants for specific projects. The Board of Assessors met last Tuesday, no, Thursday, sorry, last Thursday, and therefore we were able to talk, to deliberate about this whole issue. We continue to support the idea of hiring the individual who has applied for the 24-hour per week position, who has been the interim assessor as a, in, for a couple of years now, greater than two years. And we are recognizing that the Collins Report just came in, the new job description just came in, and frankly, I've perused it, but I haven't, we certainly haven't talked about it because we haven't met since then as a board, so we can't say that we've done that. At this point, we're going to, I'm going to point out what we consider to be sort of the negatives of hiring an outside firm at this transitional time, and that is, you know, an individual who's coming in from an outside consulting firm to provide the principal assessor role will not necessarily have a knowledge of the geography of our town, of the people of our town, of the culture of our town. We heard that sometimes you, you put an email in or you leave a voicemail, then you get a call back, and sometimes there's a waiting situation. Now, that doesn't, isn't the only negative because having a part-time principal assessor doesn't mean they're going to be sitting there all the time the town hall is open. That's not the way we've structured it. There's also a strong point to make that we have some, we have some individuals in the roles right now that get along really well with each other. The, the current interim assessor, his name is Dave, and the currently hired administrative assistant, whose name is Kathy, have developed a good working relationship. They feel like they can work with other people within town hall. We only hear positives from these, about these people. I haven't heard any negatives personally about any issue, not that I'm here all the time. And that's kind of the primary thing. We don't have any, anything objective to say they're not doing their job, or that specifically the principal assessor in the interim role is not doing their job. We.
I just want to be clear, that wasn't the. I just want to be clear, that wasn't the point of our discussion last week. That was nothing to do about a person, whether they were qualified to do their job or not. It was a question about the most effective way to man the office.
Yes, and I do understand the cost efficiencies point of it and have very seriously understood this. And I think that is a possibility, but not for right now. That's, I think, the point we want to make. I think when I was before you, the last time, I made the point that I didn't personally know this was something we should be looking at. And I wish Darcy was here to speak, and I'm just going to tell you that she worked closely with the previous chair, who was a very experienced assessor. He had actually helped develop the Vision staff software, this gentleman that passed away. And he felt like the staffing in the office, as we are proposing it, would work. Now, granted, we had originally asked for a full-time principal assessor, but we've revised it for budgetary reasons, et cetera, and for who could we get as full-time that would meet what we have available to us right now. So I think I would be without a question telling you that there is just no reason that we wouldn't just go ahead and hire Dave at a 24-hour-per-week position. And the only caveat on this is the fact that the Collins report just came in. I don't know how long it would take to integrate all that information and sort of absorb it and consume it. Well, I don't mean the report, I meant job descriptions, excuse me.
Job descriptions.
Job descriptions, excuse me, Stephen. And like I said, we just got them yesterday, so nobody's had a chance to really kind of consume where that would put us right now. We feel pretty strongly that time is ticking. I heard the building inspector say, you know, these certificates of occupancy, the number that occurred since early January, I wasn't even aware of that. If Darcy went out, was it, did he say eight times or something like that? How many did he say occurred since the beginning of January? I don't, I'm not aware if she did that. But, you know, having somebody that can go out and do more field visits, can go out and do more of the information that we need, the new software that Ed just mentioned, or somebody mentioned, the Vadar software, these are all things that are, there's already an orientation to these things in the office, especially on the part of Dave, as I understand it. So I'm trying to, if it's strictly on cost to look at the outside firm, I think that may be an important point to consider, but I don't think it's for right now. I really think we should allow some time to pass and then we have more information and we can do more legwork to try to get, sort of, put it out for an RFP, which, you know, it takes, what, 30 days, I think, to get a response to it, et cetera. So, and I know, you know, that you made the point to me, Chris, that, you know, just kind of getting a sense for what would it cost? Without an RFP, I wouldn't know what they would charge our town. And we also know that there's more than one firm out there, that we mentioned RRG before. I found out there's something called Mayflower, there's something else called Patriot, I think. And this person that spoke to me said that, you know, you really need to vet these things really, really closely, and some of the best firms might not accept or even apply for the RFP because they don't want to overextend themselves. You know, hallelujah, it's not all about money for them, it's about doing a good job. What else can I tell you? That's all I can tell you right now.
Could you talk a little bit to the group's rationality and why they're comfortable now reducing the position by nine hours? Right, because it was a 35-hour-a-week position. It's going down 24.
It's actually 40.
Forty, forty, all right. I'm sorry. Because a lot of the things, I don't disagree with a lot of things you said, but I think a lot of it is the person being able to get out of the office. And the original.
Request was for a full-time.
Well, it was, and then I, and I bought into how you were shifting with the two people to do it. But the premise was the office was always going to be covered. So if the office is open 31 or 32 hours, not counting the Friday.
It's still going to be covered full-time, and the reason is we're going to stagger.
Correct, but doesn't that then say there's only like three hours available for the principal assessor to actually go do these inspections and get out of the office and stay within the 24?
Well, thank you. I didn't think of it that way. I can't say we actually deliberated on that, but I think that there might be time where there would be zero persons in the office, but mostly if we had the, I think there's going to, oh, sorry, there's going to be enough overlap to fulfill the four days that it would be open in the office. I think that was the consideration, and it wouldn't be going out several hours every day. It would be worked around to some extent. That's the general discussion, if you're asking me, what did we discuss?
As a general rule, I generally defer to the committees, you know, to come in with their recommendation and go along with it if we can. I'm just, you know, everything starts with the assessor's office, it's the letter A, right? So, you know, we found out that, I mean, how long it had been since personal property had been assessed and updated and, you know.
That's right.
And it was acted upon, it's all been, you know, taken care of. It just, that's my only hesitation, is going along with this reduces the number of hours, and if you guys thought about it and are comfortable with it, then.
We did think about it, and did we come up with a good answer for you right now? No, we didn't, I didn't. But I believe we've thought about it, we've considered there to be overlap time in order to have a presence in the office. There'll obviously be times when somebody will call in sick or whatever, that there won't be a presence in the office, but for them, and the flip side of that is, from what I understand, some of these outside firms don't have people in the office, that, what I'm told is that, you know, if a citizen comes in, a property owner comes in, they say, I have a question, I need the assessor to answer this question. And if you're using an outside firm, you're leaving a voicemail or you're.
That's incorrect.
Well, that's not what was told to me. That may be incorrect, but that was not what was told to me.
What the towns get is what you put in that RFP. So if you require a principal assessor to be in the office four hours, eight hours, 16 hours a week, that's what they're providing.
I see. Well, then, I don't have an answer for that because that isn't what it was told to me, but it very likely makes sense. This other individual, well, it's only one person and it's, I mean, it's not hearsay because I spoke directly to this person, but.
The question is, at this point in time, PR, PQB had already approved the lesser amount, correct? But we never, we never signed it here the other night, right?
It got tabled, right?
We tabled it. So did you guys pick it back up tonight or no?
No, because it didn't get sent back to PP, it stayed with the select board. We took up the assistant.
Oh, oh, oh.
That's what got sent back.
I see. Okay, so we got.
We can get to that.
Yeah, I was going to say that that's going to come up because I don't see that one coming back. So my question on that's going to be, was there any decision made on if the assistants needed to be posted or not before hiring?
There was discussion.
And if there wasn't a resolve of that or was, that's going, to me, going to be pertinent for a PRF to be posted before hiring on this, too.
So I can give an update on the assistant.
Maybe go to the assistant and then we'll come back on this.
Yeah, I mean.
Might have started with that one first.
We, you know, Cindy was there, we had a conversation about it. Just to refresh everybody's memory, the original PRF was for 15 hours. The person was hired, then there was a modification to increase up to.
24.
Yeah, temporarily, to help during the transition. That didn't cause any alarms, temporary, didn't trigger the benefits. And the current incumbent in the position has a annual hour restriction. So to do it temporarily over a short period of time, 24 hours, was okay. Cannot work in excess of 21, believes cannot work in excess of 21 hours.
That's what she tells us, yeah.
So based on that information, and the, and also that since that information came to light, the board itself has not had time to meet, that we said, if we act on this, the person can't stay on the job because you're asking us to approve 24 hours, so they have to accept a 24-hour job. So perhaps if you really think it's 21, you may want to ask for a range of 20 to 24 hours. So you have flexibility, but what's before us right now is 24 hours. So it's going back for the board to meet, and PPP is willing to hold a special meeting upon 48-hour notice to take up that sole subject after they have time to deliberate. Fair enough?
Yep, exactly.
So that's the status on that one.
So that means 20 to, sorry, 20 to 24, is that what you just said?
Well, only with the storyline we were given.
Okay.
Is that, you know, there's more to it, but there's a benefit element in there. It really wasn't in our purview to get into it because that's an individual personnel issue. But in broad strokes, yes. Did I answer that right?
What about posting anything then? Do we have to repost all this for 10 days or are we?
It's on hold. I understand there's a posting up right now, and I heard rumor of 64 applications, but it hasn't been confirmed yet.
Really? Quite a rumor.
To correct the rumor, I'm not aware of any myself, and if somebody knows of some, let us know, yes.
So if I'm hearing this right, so then just to get the steps in order, so go back to Board of Assessors to look at this new hourly range.
I believe the PPP was prepared to approve the 24, which was going to trigger a new posting, which meant then that the incumbent would have to apply.
Yep.
It's our understanding, because our rules say, it says 24 hours, you have to agree to take a 24-hour post, that that person would not be interested in that. Now, there are only three members of us there. The town treasurer was absent, and the former town treasurer was absent. So you know who was on the committee. None of us know of a previous scenario where a office job had a range of hours. PD, it's up to 19 and a half hours, so it can be anywhere in there, but most, all the other office jobs, so we, you know, we kind of left it out there. Nobody was really opposed to setting a range of hours, but it wasn't for the committee to make that decision. It's up to the board to say, do you really need the 24? Are you comfortable with 20 to 24 if it's the right person? And, you know.
Yeah, because the PCF we had last week was definitive at 24.
Correct.
Give it that leeway, I see what you mean, okay.
Right, which goes over the 20, which triggers the benefits and which requires the new posting.
Okay. So are you clear on what needs to happen with that?
I'm clear on that one, yes. And I've written notes, thank you.
A meeting with PQB within 48 hours, and that would trigger?
Once they meet, we can call a meeting of those three of us to act upon.
Okay, and then we would still have to sign off on it before it can be posted, though.
Right, but we're going to budget season, so we're going to start meeting twice a week, right?
We will be meeting, I'm sure.
So we got some incorrect information about the approval to go ahead and post it. So we actually did post it 24, I guess we can take that down because it's not correct. So we'll take it down.
Okay, so that's kind of in motion. So I guess we definitely don't have any personnel paperwork in front of us tonight for this, for the assessor.
Which you did before.
Yeah, we tabled, it's floating around here somewhere.
So what is anybody's?
Floating around right there, actually.
You have it, actually? Okay.
Doesn't that one say it's a 40-hour position, right? The origin?
That was a full-time.
The posting.
The posting, that was a PRF. That one actually got done, right? That PRF. We didn't sign the.
Right, but this is the same issue. The job posting went out for 40-hour job, and the request is to authorize the hiring at less than.
My gosh.
It's going the other way.
Yeah, this does not have the posting with it.
But I'd just remind the board that since the board held onto it, the board has the ability to modify it on the fly and just act upon it.
So this one is a little bit different because it had already been advertised as benefited. So this is still going to be a benefited position, but fewer hours.
Still benefited, but 16 hours less.
Yeah.
And to me, that's the difference. The other one was more, the job ended up being richer than what was posted.
Correct.
Not that that makes it okay, but.
Isn't, I've got one right here. About, at, from 31 to 24 hours per week. Is this not a PRF?
Is it signed by?
We're looking for the posting, not the PRF.
Darcy signed it.
No, the posting would have been what went on the bulletin board.
This isn't a posting. What do you got? Show him.
Right. So there should be, whatever went on the board wasn't, was being awarded, it was the So we advertise.
We had to re-advertise this.
Well, I don't know because it's not making it richer.
Well, might it be richer to an individual that doesn't want to work 40 hours a week and says, jeez, I'd like to earn that rate, but at 24 and benefited, I do.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to keep on dragging this out, though, guys. We need to keep on moving on something here. Does it make sense with the Collins report?
Well, and if you did fall back to the earlier request, drafting the RFP would be exceedingly detail-oriented and time-consuming, and then allowing time for response, review, award, and settlement, this couldn't help us for many months. And that was another challenge that the board was facing.
Well, usually the RFP is posted for about a month. It wouldn't be posted for longer than that at all.
Right, it's posted for a month, and I'm just going to throw it back. So let's just say this PRF is inadequate and it's not approved. So it comes back in two weeks to be approved, comes back and it's got to be posted, there's another two weeks. You basically have the same four weeks.
But you can't, we wouldn't be able to do the, or we could do the RFP while all this paperwork is moving, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Because that was my concern, I don't want to add one month and another month on top of everything. And, I mean, I think if we have to do some consideration for a new posting, I guess I'm not sure that we have to do that for the assessor.
I don't think so.
I think we could make that decision not to necessarily do that one. The other one, I think we have to because you're really changing that.
I think the underlying question here is, are we as a select board comfortable with reducing the allocation of resources to the job? And do we, do we trust that 24 hours is going to, or, yeah, 24 hours is going to be sufficient?
Be 24, it'd still be 24 for this person, for the principal, right?
Correct.
24 there, but maybe only 21 on the assistant, if that's what I'm hearing.
And we'll post it with a range, 20 to 24.
Right.
If that can be done, yeah.
So that's 45-hour hours of labor to cover how many hours that the office is open a week?
8:30 to 4:00.
Well, but originally, we were supposed to have a 40-hour principal and a 15-hour support person. So we had committed to 55 hours of coverage.
Right.
And the office is open 31 hours. So in theory, the rest is out in the field doing assessments and.
Right, so with 45 total hours, there could be some overlap and still some time for the principal assessor to do field work if the assistant is office-bound. And then, as I understand how the budget is being developed, you still anticipate using outside consultants for specific.
There is still a consultant line in the budget, correct.
So when you need a particular project or expertise, that's still part of how you cover the total.
That'd be for like your special valuations or something?
Yeah, and I, what's the name of the firm that's going to do commercial, what was the name of that firm? I can't recall the name. But there's a firm that has already been contracted and has done it before, so, yep.
So it's a combination of resources to support the.
I mean, it is a matter of public record, so we could find out, but I'm just curious as to why the individual wants to keep that other part-time job. And the only thing I can think of is the hourly rate is higher because you're going to get the benefits from us.
I believe the other part-time job is in the evening, has been able to be filled outside of the usual hours of our office being open, and he's been there a number of years, and he, that's my understanding. I'm concerned about saying that because I didn't ask him directly, and so I can't answer that. The one he's going to let go was one that it was, he would be working during day hours, and he, I don't believe has given them notice at this point because it's up in the air.
Okay. So are we ready to take any kind of a motion tonight? I mean, I'm, I think I'm of the emotion at this, of the motion, of the opinion at this point. You've at least tried to contact people. You know, I'm not surprised if people didn't get back to you. I assume most of these have been smaller towns for the most part that don't have an assessor's office open.
They didn't even return a call, a town clerk who says, I'm in the office today, and it was the second time, and I said, who I am, and I just really would appreciate a call, and didn't even call me back just because I didn't say I didn't live in. And didn't even call me back just because I didn't say I didn't live in that town, I guess. I don't know.
Take some time with me next week and I can at least, I can guarantee I will get you in touch with one other community.
Well, we're going to be meeting again. When are we meeting again? Today's the 15th. We're not meeting, we're meeting on the 27th. In between time, we'll be meeting again on the finance one, hopefully. I don't know. Does everybody want to still continue this notion of looking at at least the option of getting some other feedback from towns? It sounds like they've done all that they are going to get from the towns. And I don't know. I mean, I heard the point last time around, I think, of we've got somebody in the office already who's doing it, whereas these other towns might have been in a situation where they had nobody and they had to go out and find somebody else. So I'm, I'm kind of in between, but I'm willing to be convinced, so.
Part of my recommendation is that we do definitely look at a different option, but not right now. That's, well, if not now, when?
Do you make a decision?
You can't bring them on full-time, I mean, we can't offer?
And let them go, yeah.
You can't put somebody on a full-time position and then go look at this, too. So, I mean, you make a choice, right? So is anybody ready to make a motion or do you want to wait on it for another week?
When I see the Collins report information coming out, does it make sense for, to allow the time for the committee to consider that in terms of how they would like to phrase the posting? To see what type of applicants they would get based on any, any information that Collins report would provide?
We don't have the Collins report. We have some, all I've seen is some job descriptions. I haven't seen a whole report. I wouldn't, I mean, you guys would, I guess.
No, we don't have the report.
Sorry.
So. Any else?
I guess I'm of the opinion, if we don't have a, I mean, you know, if we don't have a solid game plan, what's another week going to do? Let's just act on the proposal that's before us. And move, you know?
Second.
I will just clarify, I'm not making that motion. I would just clarify, I will not be a happy camper if the assessor's office, the Board of Assessors comes back within the next 365 days and says we need more hours.
Yeah.
That's my only, I mean, we're okay for 55 right now and I hear you guys are saying we can make it work under and I'm like, okay, but then we got to set the budget and we at least got to go full budget cycle. So if there is an ulterior motive or game plan?
I haven't heard that we were going to do that.
Okay.
We've been limping along, and I mean limping along, with a bunch of circumstances since I've been on the board, which was last May.
And we recognize that you guys have stepped up and done more as volunteer members of a board than most boards ever do.
Fair enough. And we've heard from all the other volunteers.
We're going on three.
Including yourselves.
And there are vacancies on the board as well.
Yeah, well, yeah, you're going to get an opportunity to review that soon, yeah.
Qualify that. They're shorthanded and re-earned.
All right. Well, anybody want to make a motion then? We had a PRF or something before us, PCF? What did we have last week that we don't have in front of us right now? PCF?
There's a PRF here.
For the assessor?
Yeah.
It's the one I just showed you.
PRF. No PCF?
No, it's PCF.
There is, but that depends on, are you approving the PRF and it has to be reposted or it doesn't have to be reposted?
No, I think we just said that we don't think it has to be reposted because it's fewer hours, whereas the assistant one, we think it does. That's what I think I heard. Right?
Yeah. So the first, so there's got to be two motions. The first motion has to be to approve the PRF as amended and waive the requirement that it be posted.
How are we establishing that, though? I mean, are we just saying that? Is that enough to, I mean, I would think that it doesn't have to be established, that it doesn't have to be posted? I guess I'm not comfortable with just saying it is enough to?
I think what John was saying is that having been through PQB, once it comes from them and comes back to select board, we've got the ability to modify it. We don't have to go back to PQB.
Yeah, we, yeah, I mean, we can make it, I mean, traditionally would have to be posted. And you'd have, you'd have to wait the 10, I think it's 10 days for it to be posted. We, we, we as the highest elected body can waive that right. I have no doubt that this will, that if we do this, this will come back to bite us when another group wants to do something. So, but we, we can do that.
So what is the, it's just our decision, there's no, do we have any criteria which we would use to make the decision? Is it based on certain change that occurs that, okay, that triggers it being reposted?
Reducing the total compensation is the criterion that's been discussed. Whether that motivates you or not?
I see.
That's the question.
Okay, so if there's some, if there's, if something would enhance the offer, you're saying that's the criteria? So a motivator for someone to apply?
If the offer is enhanced, we're discussing not waiving the posting requirement.
Yes.
So that there's fair notice.
This would be the next thing.
More lucrative.
Which is the case of the assistant scenario, which I think we are saying.
So criteria is, is it being enhanced?
It's already been advertised as a full-time.
An argument why someone might prefer a job with fewer hours plus benefits, it's?
So Dan, would you be more comfortable with approving it at the, as the modification is and require the public posting for 10 days to see if anybody applies?
Yeah, that's the criteria I would include because you want to be fair and equal opportunity employers here. And I think having a new change in the criteria may attract more people or not, I don't know.
Hasn't so far, but yeah. I mean, it's, but just to be clear, I think we have had a PRF and a posting, right?
Yes.
At some point in time on the assessor's position, advertised as full-time, this would still be full-time, but fewer hours.
Yes.
So that's it.
I'm just saying that, to me, I would feel more comfortable posting it, but?
Is that your motion?
You guys can, can?
Is that your motion to approve the PRF as amended and require the posting for 10 days?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
It's a quicker result than several of the other paths that we were talking about, including punting to our next meeting.
So would this still go back, just as a question, would this go back to, if PQB had an emergency meeting, would you take this one up to?
No, it doesn't need, so far, everything we've done regarding this post doesn't need to go back to PQB.
Doesn't need to go back to?
The posting would go up, the question, the question then becomes, what happens when an application comes in? So I guess then the board would have to consider that application plus the one it already has before it.
Mm-hmm.
And then they would make a recommendation through the PCF on who they wanted to suggest. Now, that, that, I guess that PCF would probably, probably should go to QPB or PBB.
The one that I just showed you?
Yeah.
The first one?
Because it'll be on the new posting with an effective date. But we could, I mean, we could do it all at the same time.
If you had that emergency meeting, you could do it all at the same time. And am I correct in saying that the current person had already applied? We have an application from him in-house?
Yes, yes. And he was also, references were checked on him previously when he came in as an interim.
But the other positive is he has not given notice to his current employer.
The one he intended to leave, I do not believe so, but I couldn't guarantee that that is the case. He knows that we're dealing with all this.
Yeah, I would hesitate for somebody to give notice until we've done our thing.
Exactly, yeah.
I would not advise that at all.
Yep, yep.
We move like lightning.
Some days we do and some days we don't. Okay, so.
And the motion?
I think we have a motion. Are we ready to vote on Dan's motion, which says to send it back for reposting?
To accept the modification.
To accept modifications?
As required the 10-day public posting.
10-day public posting and then if there are new applications coming?
It would go to the, to the board to decide what they want to do.
The board, okay.
And then if we, then we have to go back to PBB with our recommendation, even if it's the same individual?
Yeah, because I'm guessing that one has an effective date.
Okay, I'll look on that, yeah.
If it's blank, then you could probably use that. But if it has an effective date, then it would need to be modified.
Okay, sorry.
It does have an effective date.
Yeah.
It does?
February 12th.
Okay, so.
So we have to go back.
Dan's motion, I think. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right.
Oppose?
Any opposed?
One, yes, okay.
I would waive.
Okay, so three to one? Okay. All right, motion passes. We will get it back for reposting, 10 days. And keep on moving.
This is really fun.
Don't we love personalities?
I do like you all. That's great.
Get me the new, you want to get the new posting, too? That's what we just approved.
Okay, we'll do no later than Tuesday because Monday's a holiday, right?
Yep.
The office, you're going to be in tomorrow? Well, I'll be honest with you, I think it should be deliberated on by the board before we start doing that. So we're meeting on Tuesday.
Okay.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cindy. All right, and then we're clear on the assistant as well, right? We know what's happening there.
Yeah, we acted on that, right?
Okay. All right, moving on.
Did we get these, everyone said?
Nope, only two.
Oh, yeah, that's all right.
Thank you, Cindy. The hours that they've been putting in is real.
We'll keep moving. We'll get there. We really will get there. Okay, well, Ed, come back in. Is your up? You're up.
Yeah, don't skip the Collins.
Want to go to PQB?
You want to take up the rules and regulations?
Yeah, let's jump onto PQB while he's talking then. Okay, so we got in our package, basically the, some level of an update, some revisions to the personnel policy, what? Personnel what? Policy and procedures, there we go.
Yep.
Couldn't remember the last word. Personnel policy and procedures, regulations. And this has been through a public hearing, which was in the end of January. So John, you want to kind of walk us through?
Sure, so I'm going to, I'll try and stay on the summary page. We can dive into details if my explanation is in.
Yeah, I think the summary page would be fine.
But we did hold a public hearing. And then after the public hearing, which had limited comment, the committee voted to accept all these recommended changes and forwarded to the select board for final authorization. So the first one is, the page number references the overall handbook. So page eight, full-time employee definition, add, per Hampshire County Retirement System, full-time equivalency is defined as a minimum of 35 hours per week. For all purposes, all service that is less than 35 hours a week will be prorated against the full-time equivalency of 35 hours per week. Currently, without that wording in there, the Hampshire Retirement Board considers full-time for South Hampton to be 40 hours. So while that's not our definition, somebody working the maximum hours here of 35 is not getting full service credit. So that just changed that to line up that. Page nine, probationary period definition, remove of actual work and add calendar days. In that scenario, you could see an election worker would actually have to work 90 elections before they would finish there. I don't think they'd ever get off probation.
Never.
As an example. So just clarify the language.
Sure.
Page nine is process, change finance to accountant, have the accountant have the ability to sign off. That's going to be a reoccurring theme as we go through this. Page 14, contents of records, section D, add certifications and licenses. Page 16, process, section A, number two, seeking authorization to fill open positions, add the wording. Section six, PRF for newly created positions only, would you need finance to sign off on them? Otherwise, all positions should already be approved and in the budget. That would just?
So that would skip the finance signing step?
Correct, as long as it's already approved, passed, and in the budget.
Okay.
Page 21, again, probationary period, clarify 90-day probation to be consistent with definition, 90 calendar days, add C definition from section F, stay it up above. 23 is a grammar, ensure to insure. Page, I didn't catch that one. Page 24, compensation plan merit increase, change finance to accountant for process. Page 25, compensation plan interim wage increase, change finance to accountant, process. Page 29, holidays, change coverage to full-time and part-time benefit employees who work 20 hours or more hired on or after the approval date of this passage. Note, current part-time employees would be grandfathered, so there's a hold harmless clause there. Remove, are legally observed by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, replace with fall, remove sections A, B, and C, replace with eligible employees will be paid for the above listed holidays provided the following conditions are met. The employee must have worked the full scheduled shift on the last scheduled workday prior to and the next scheduled workday after such holiday unless the absence is due to a previously approved vacation or personal day. Sick leave will only be acceptable if approved by administration in consultation with the department head. And that, right there is that the town administrator, the, so the department head can't just approve it for sick leave. B, the employee must not be in any unpaid status. C, if any of the above listed holidays fall on Sunday, the following Monday shall be considered the holiday. If on Saturday, the preceding Friday will be considered the holiday, administration reserves the right to adjust holiday schedules. That addresses the Veterans Day. The, is it on that one or are you?
Yep, no.
No, there's a hand.
No, sorry.
Just want to clarify something because?
Let me go find.
In the previous one, you said you referenced to administration is the town administrator, correct?
That would be my?
Yeah.
Okay. Without going to the body, yes.
Now, administration reserves the right to adjust holiday schedules, is that the town administrator also being consistent? Or would that administration actually supposed to be select board?
So on page 29, for what I just read, I would, I would amend it as a select board member to replace the word administration and insert the word select board.
I think that's perfect. Thank you, John.
Last sentence only?
Yes, for that one. And then let me just go back and make sure that the?
About the one above on sick leave, though, too.
What's that?
The one on sick leave as well?
Well, that's what I got to go back to.
Then, actually, it looks like that was the language that was already in there.
Yeah, but I think it's good to clarify because if we're questioning what administration means. So I believe that that should be town administrator.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm going to offer that as amendments.
Town administrator in consultation with the department head on that one. Okay?
Yeah, because it was the, it's the, to me, the intent is, the department head alone cannot waive that. They need somebody above them, and it shouldn't wait for a select board vote.
Right, okay.
Makes perfect sense.
All right. Pages 31 and 32, vacation leave, change earned service equivalents to after one year, three after three years. Note, 90-day probationary period has to be completed before vacation leave is granted. Vacation days can be carried over to the next fiscal year in the event that the employee was unable to use vacation time due to a higher date within the last 90 days of the fiscal year. You get hired, you got a 90-day probationary period, if it wipes out the entire fiscal year, you couldn't have used any of those times, therefore, the employee should be penalized by losing their time and carry it over. Page 33 and 34, sick leave, add, sick days may be carried over to accumulate up to a maximum of 10 sick days per fiscal year. Sick days may be used during probationary period. And as we do not, for non-union people, we do not pay out sick leave, so there's really no additional financial thing there. Page 56, meal reimbursement policy, update to reflect the select board's recommendations, add current PCF form and remove old PCF form. Page 72 and 73, remove old PCF and replace with current PCF. Page 75 and 76, remove personal separation questionnaire form, form is not currently used. And page 77, remove the National Position Evaluation Plan, no longer used.
Okay, that's quite a, quite a list, and I think you had told me that there's still more to do, but this is one that's been longstanding.
Right, so we get this done, approved, then we can start taking the next revisions. In theory, I would think that something like this should come forward annually, even if it's, we've looked at it and there are no changes to be made.
True, no, I would think so, if not, yeah, annually, but the next one, I don't think we have to wait a year for, we should probably do something within the next six months, I would hope.
Well, let me put it in my calendar.
I just think there's a few other things, I know there were a couple that we, you know, we had raised.
March 8.
I think there were a couple that we had raised about sick leave and so forth, that I would like to see us act on.
That's in there, we put sick leave in, and we put the vacation.
There were a couple that I thought you had raised, they didn't get approved that night.
One thing I have to go back and re-edit and resubmit.
Right, but everything that made it up to us...
Oh, really?
Got incorporated.
Okay.
Well, yeah, I think one thing came back with questions, and that's what we're waiting on, right?
Right, exactly, yeah.
Okay, all right. So, with that, I will take a motion to approve these changes as recommended by the PQB, and I assume somebody at PQB will be doing all this magical entry and...
Yeah, so the...
And is amended this evening, correct?
As amended this evening, right.
Yes, as amended this evening, I'll forward over to Rob and the clerk who can update the Word version and then send it to Ed in PDF to verify that it's...
Okay.
All the changes were incorporated, and then cause it to be posted.
All right, good, so I think that's sort of a motion?
Second?
Second, Dan, all right. Any questions? Okay.
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Hearing no opposition, that's approved, thank you. Thanks for the work in doing all that, and, you know, we'll slowly get ourselves into some compliance, I think, with regular personnel regulations, that, you know, this has been sitting and hadn't been done in quite a while, so...
Thank you.
Something needed to be done. Okay, we'll jump back up to what we skipped over, so, Ed, update on the Collins Center.
Sure.
Saying a report, but we know it's not a report.
No.
What do we got?
No. We have received the job descriptions from the Collins Center, I have sent those out either to the pertinent board chairs or the department heads, and it's a two-step process. The employee is to review them first, and if they have a computer, they're to take these Word documents, turn on the track changes, and make any edits, amendments, whatever you want to call them, to those job descriptions. Those employees have until next Tuesday, which I think is the 20th, to then turn, take those changes and submit them back to their department heads or board changes, then those department heads or board chairs have one week to make any additional edits or amendments, and they are to, then they return them to me for February 27. They will be returned to the Collins Center, and I anticipate that they will take those, turn them around fairly quickly, and then finish their report, which I expect the select board should have a draft of around mid-March.
And that draft will consist of any changes that many, and somebody might have made, or somebody's approved on, on these job descriptions, as well as the...
As well as the...
The compensation plan itself?
With the, shall we say, a, the classification grades of the different positions and a, I'll just call it a range, a starting point, a midpoint, and a high point for each of those grades.
Each of the grades?
Yep.
Okay. So, we expect that back by middle of March, then?
Yes.
Can we somehow make that a drop-dead date for them, so that they understand that we're really waiting on this for all of our budget decisions? I think we definitely would want to factor in whatever they're telling us for realistic, you know, salary ranges as much as we can, or at least be able to analyze what's coming at us in terms of where our current employees are.
Correct.
See how far we are from at least, you know, where are we in relation to median, sorry?
Yep, no, you're right, and then if we have to, if we agree, if they say this is where it should be, and we say, yes, we're right, but realistically, it's going to take us a two-year process to get there.
Yeah.
The sooner we can communicate that out and show good faith by getting halfway there.
Right, I mean, at least we can make a start, but we know, you know, we've got a plan in mind, so our next, our first March meeting would be March 12, so if you could try to relay that to them, that we'd love this by then.
It's a little earlier than mid-March.
It is. We've got an extra day in February, so y'all have to take this. All right, thanks, no, because, I mean, you know, we want to be really using that as a guide, I think, during our, our budget meetings, so sooner than later, thank you. All right, anybody else have any comments, questions on that? All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the town administrator's contract for Scott Zibek, town administrator, effective today, February 15.
Okay. All right, let me just fill out a couple, couple pieces of information, I don't know that we announced this at the last meeting in detail. So, Scott Zibek has approved his contract and is more than ready to start, he's going to be starting on February 22, and we'll have just about a week overlap, a little bit, one day short, because we were sending him off to training already in his first week, but he will be here on the 22nd, and we'll probably do a coffee and donuts, make a little something here on the morning of the 22nd, so I'll send a note around once we get that kind of organized a bit, but everybody will be welcome to stop by and say hi and get to know him, and then we're still planning something for the person down at the end of the table here for his, his departure, so we'll make that known later on, too. But Scott is going to be starting and filling out, basically, the role of the town administrator with the existing funds that we have available in that budget line, which right now is budgeted at 36, 35, so $3,635.32 as a bi-weekly compensation, and so he's fine with that for fiscal year 25 going forward, his contract states salary of $117,500, and for the following fiscal year, $120,000. And he's got the same, basically, benefits and so forth as town employees, probationary period, et cetera. So, we're looking forward to having Scott join us, and we will sign off tonight, and he actually has already, he's dropped by a signed copy, so we've already got his signature on it, so...
Excuse me.
Did we have a second? I think, did it?
Yes, yes, Stephen seconded it.
Stephen did, I think, yep.
And did you have a vote?
We didn't yet, so I was just talking, explaining it to the people, so I was just letting people know that we have signed it and what some of the terms are, so with that, may I have a vote to sign this contract?
Aye.
All right, I hear no opposition, so thank you very much, motion passes, and we will welcome our new town administrator very soon. All right. Okay, so, Senior Center Building Committee update, I guess we both talked about it a tad, but if you've got some other things, just to put it in better perspective than maybe what I had already said, but go ahead, Ed, if there's something.
No, they, they are going through the steps, like I say, they wanted to actually, and the actual report from today's Per Test hasn't, won't be ready for a week or so, but I did go out there, and a couple of members of the public, the Senior Center Building Committee were out there, and they ended up, oh, God, they had to dig at least eight, if not more, holes, some were as deep as 10 feet deep, the test pits were not that deep, but the test pits did come in, I will say favorable, both what the section that would, might be the actual leach field and the section that may be the alternate leach field, both tested at under 10 minutes drainage, which is excellent for a commercial kitchen, probably the only, and the field, the field should be sited between where they dug today and the existing pipes that were out there that were, where the previous holes may have been dug. Don't want to go any further back than the holes that were dug today, nor any further forward than where those, those pipes are. The one thing that we did notice today while we were out there is, yes, there is a pond over on the left side of the property, whether it's just a pond or a vernal pool, don't know. It does appear that it would be, shall we say, 100 feet or further from where that leach, leach field might be, but it will be something that will, you know, have to be checked with conservation when the time comes, because the, because...
Public safety will need to have it delineated and bring it to the common con, not public, senior center.
Yeah, no, yeah, eventually, yeah, if, yeah.
Because the Per Tests actually did go so well, I was authorized to sign the proposal to move forward with the appraisal, so I did sign that.
And these were witnessed...
What's that?
The soil tests, there's been much discussion in both of the committees about soil testing, and just to cut to the quick, these are witnessed, certified soil tests that can be relied upon for a period of years.
Correct, so the correct number of test pits done.
Yep.
The town's health agent was there, was to witness them, there was a soil evaluator on site.
Right, that's the key thing, we just need to continue to build understanding with the public about what the steps are, what qualifies, what's just doing some exploration but doesn't qualify you to move forward with documenting an appraisal or putting together a building plan.
Yeah, no, and this is, this is good news, too, because I think originally they had done just a couple of holes or tried to, but didn't get far enough, and it was an incomplete test, so they couldn't really move forward with anything, so...
Correct, you need two separate sections, and they only had one previously, so that...
Just had to wait for it to be cold enough.
Yeah.
The ground isn't frozen, really, though.
This does meet all the criteria, you know, one of, several steps to come before the town meeting, the committee will want to actually, and the select board will have to authorize that, whether it happens to be tonight or at a future meeting, a title search will need, and report will need to be done, but that needs, you don't want that too far ahead of the town meeting in the closing.
I move that we immediately order title examination on the Zero College Highway property with the understanding that...
But let's finish the Senior Center one first, we're on the Senior Center one first.
Oh, I thought we jumped.
Not yet. So, here, I just want a clarification, this, we would have, we'd have our KP Law do this, title search?
Yes, correct.
So, what we would need is a motion to allow legal...
KP Law does title searches?
What's that?
KP Law does title searches?
Contracted, okay.
Yeah, so we would just need to...
The properties we have gotten through, the water grants and the other grants...
Okay.
Yes, we have used their, their service to do the title search.
Okay, so we would need to take that out of...
Yeah, we come, again, everything for the Senior Center is coming from, the funds from the Parsons Estate, correct?
So, all we would need to do is just vote to say they're authorized to go through the town administrator to get the title searched.
To utilize KP Law for their service.
To use KP Law. Okay, so let's get that one.
Title rundown always has to be done at closing, why wouldn't you do the title evaluation at this point to inform the appraisal and any issues that the seller might need to clean up to get to a clean closing?
Because the title examination is null and void over a certain amount of days before the closing.
And we'll be...
The certification needs to be updated at closing, that's correct.
Yes.
Yeah, so all we're trying to do is do the first, the first title search area right now, certification.
Yeah, they will need that authorization from the select board.
The acquired title, all together.
Yeah, no, I know, but for right now, we're just authorizing them to use KP Law's services to get the title search done.
Immediately, so it's available to the appraiser.
Why pay for it twice? That and the update.
Wait until the appraiser comes back and says, where's your title work?
The appraiser won't come back and say, where's your title work?
He's going to be back in two weeks, right?
Four.
Four weeks, sorry, four weeks.
I don't know what kind of appraisal he is in.
Okay, so we're, basically, we just need to say that we're okay with the Senior Center Building Committee using KP Law services to do whatever they need to do for a title search.
Correct.
And the money will be paid for not from town coffers, but from the estate.
Right. Title certification, whatever.
That is a, that is a, okay, and...
It's limited to a title certification.
Okay, so with that motion?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, very good, thank you. Okay, now we can get on to the Public Safety Building Committee, so, next update. So, Ed, I know we had had the, at the Public Safety Building Committee, we had the proposal from Crowley, but I don't think, did that go around to select board, too?
What's that?
The proposal from Crowley on the appraisal, did that go to select board or just Public Safety?
Well, there's two, there's two different parts, and I have wonderful news for everyone, is because of the fact that Public Safety only has, shall we say, jurisdiction over a certain portion of this, so they have authorized the appraisal for the 4.2-acre parcel and the approximately 1-acre commercial parcel up front. That has been signed and ordered and done. As part of the proposal, there is a third part of that for the entire 52-acre parcel. They do not have jurisdiction over purchasing or approving the appraisal for the 52-acre parcel. The cost of that additional appraisal work is $2,000. However, the good news is because in the non-buying letter from the Labree's, they have said that if the town were to purchase the entire 52-acre parcel, the sighting of the Public Safety Committee facility would not be tied to being put on the 4.2-acre donated parcel, but could be cited anywhere within the 52 acres. Therefore, with that information, if the Public Safety Facility Building Committee can put it anywhere on the 52 acres, they are willing to offer out of their funds the extra $2,000 to do the appraisal on the 52 acres. However, you have a funding source now, but the select board is the only entity, in my opinion, that can actually give me the authority to sign the paperwork to do the extra work on the entire 52-acre parcel.
Right, and so that would be done essentially, I mean, the person wouldn't come out twice, they'd do it essentially at the same time as they were going to do the donated property...
The 52-acre appraisal will come maybe a couple of weeks after...
They would come out twice?
Yeah, however, basically, what they're doing is, that's why the 52-acre parcel appraisal is so inexpensive, or less expensive as comparison to the 4.2 and the 1-acre parcel, is they are going to utilize the information that they've already started on those other two parcels.
Okay, so what do you need from us? You need a motion to allow you to also engage the appraisal firm to do the appraisal on the full...
On the 52 acres for the extra $2,000.
For $2,000.
Chair, through you?
Yes.
Does this $2,000 version C appraisal include calling out the specific value of the 11-acre parcel east of Greenway?
What was that?
That would be the one that's going to be the wetland.
Does the appraisal of the entire property include calling out specifically the value of the property which is beyond the Greenway, east of the Greenway, west of the Manhattan River, independent of the total property? And the reason I ask...
No, it does not.
It has obviously limited development capabilities, and because of habit, state-designated habitat, wetland functions, riverfront, it would certainly be eligible for conservation finance as a piece of the puzzle.
But it's not part of the Labree property, I don't believe.
It absolutely is, we can review the maps, that is one of the basic educational pieces that we need to work on consistently. There are three legal parcels as it stands today, one of them is east of the Greenway, between the Greenway and the river.
Do the three parcels add up to the 52?
Yes, they do. And I would just like to take this opportunity, I'm sorry, to remind, Stephen is so hard to make out on the, on the video/audio meetings, because he sits back and he pushes his microphone away.
I'm sorry.
So, okay, well, I think, I think the basic thing is we want an appraisal of the entire parcel...
Right.
Which is comprised of three parcels, right? The entire 52, 54 acres, whatever, it's...
It's comprised of three different maps and lots.
Right.
And it's comprised of basically two different zoning sections, too.
Right.
Commercial and then residential.
Right, but we're not just talking the top land area that we can see from the road, we're talking the entire, the entire parcels that are under the ownership...
Yes, absolutely. Yes, absolutely.
Yeah. So I think that, that to me would be, yes, the parcels would be enumerated in the, in the request for them to do the work.
Okay. We'll let it go for now.
Yeah. Okay. I think that's, I should cover it all. I mean, we can only do what's, what's part of that parcel, but I think, yeah, okay, if it, I guess I was talking, I thought you were talking on the other side of the Greenway. So you're talking on this side of the Greenway.
Well, part of that, I'll just call it Lot 3. Part of that Lot 3 is on the other side of the Greenway.
Is it on the other side? Okay. All right. Okay. My mistake. All right. I think, did I, I sort of, I think I sort of made a motion. Did I or not? That the, we authorize the town administrator, go ahead. And Dan, did you second that?
Second.
All right. So go ahead with the, getting the appraisal underway. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, immediately.
Okay. Any opposed? All right. All in favor is approved. All right.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on. So that kind of takes care of, well, a little bit, maybe not. You've got more to say on the property acquisition possibility there? Is that tied into that? I mean, just a little bit?
Yeah, they both kind of end up getting tied into, yeah.
Yeah.
That would have actually fallen under the property action, property acquisition possibilities.
Okay. All right. Next up, I guess, Fire Chief Assessment Center discussion. John, you want to fill us in a little bit in terms of the search committee so far, and then I think we're at a point probably soon, maybe, with the assessment center and whatever we have to authorize for that.
So the committee met. We opened up all the applicants. We created a, prior to that, we created a, or I created a matrix based off of the job posting on what we required, and we scored that, and then what we preferred, and we scored that. And we tallied up each individual's, each candidate's points, and then divided it by five to come up with their average and ranked them ultimately one through eight. The, yeah, one through eight, so there were eight applicants, ranked them through there, ultimately identified or decided to move the top five forward to assess, to the Assessment Center. We have, on our to-do list is to contact the Assessment Center, which I hope to do tomorrow or on Tuesday, obtain a price so that it falls within the range that we have set aside to do that, and schedule that, and then notify the five individuals that they're being moved forward to the Assessment Center. But in the meantime, please provide certified copies of all educational transcripts to justify, or to support what you said in the resume and cover letters, so that we can validate...
Certificates and trainings and...
Yeah, and there are some with master's degrees, so we want to, you know, we want to verify that because if they put that down, they got extra points and to confirm our scores and to that nature. The, one of the members suggested, which, you know, I think is a great idea, that we have a, prior to moving to the Assessment Center, because part of the Assessment Center is that the five committee members will be able to put forward certain questions for the Assessment Center to ask. And I believe the majority of us are going to sit in the audience of the Assessment Center and just listen, listen to what's going on to witness it, so we can form our own opinion. Ultimately, we will select two to three people to put forward to the select board, probably without any ranking. I'm just saying, either one of these candidates would be great, then we have to ask our questions here and pick somebody that night. But what one of the members asked is that we should offer a opportunity for the current members of the Fire EMS to address or provide comments in an open public forum to the search committee, to the screening committee. So we, probably, it'll be next Thursday night in this room if it's available. Any, yeah, and we would just make it available to the rank and file. No potential candidates would participate. And it's an opportunity for them to say, this is what we're looking for, this is what we're thinking, because part of going with the Assessment Center is, the search committee will meet with the Assessment Center and say, this is what we believe the town's looking for and what we want, and we can, we can provide, we can take that feedback and tailor it and coach it in there along with what we already have from the select board's point of view.
So just to be clear, members of the rank and file would not have access to the CVs, to the resume?
They're not, they're not going to know any, any candidates, anybody, it's just...
What their desires are, kind of like what we did with Bernie in terms of what we, what are you looking for in terms of a fire chief?
Yeah.
And then, at this point, you guys have done only the paperwork. You haven't done any interviews yourself. That's going to be done at that day with the Assessment Center.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sounds like a good plan. Now, have we identified a funding source yet? Correct me if I'm...
I thought we had a $5,000 placeholder in the Fire Department line of budget.
We do? We had some. I know we used for Chief Anderson on the fire grant proposal.
There's so much money in that, but no. I don't know.
I would have to go back and take a...
I'm not sure if we might have to check.
Also, I don't, I don't think this year, as far as I know, I don't think we've used the reserve funds.
No.
No, we haven't.
I mean, I'm told this is going to be about $3,000 to do this.
I know there's still some money in that account that was put there for the, shall we say, analysis of the Fire Department. I'll have to check and see how much is left. I know there is some left.
The fire study, but that's...
The fire study.
Yes, I think there was some money left there, but I think we were going to use that to pay the cost of the...
But I, the cost of the grant didn't, I know, didn't deplete that account.
There might be some left. Okay. Good. Well, that sounds like it's moving forward. So then, with that, I'm assuming we're at least a couple, two, three weeks out.
Yeah.
So we probably have to have another extension for Chief Vasoli. I think we only did him through the end of February.
Correct, but we'll meet again between now and the 29th.
Right. So we will. So we'll have to have him on as a, another extension, short-term extension. Okay, very good.
Do it up.
Uh huh. Good news. Okay. And then, just following on, any further thoughts on Hampshire Regional School update? I think we had a good, good meeting. It wasn't televised, unfortunately, that, that regional one, but...
Yeah, I would, I mean, Dan and Chris and myself were able to attend the town of West Hampton's Town Hall and listen to the presentation and the budget. And, you know, what was given was a 3.18, or 3.81, I think it's 3.18% on Hampshire Regional, it's the high school itself, but the central office increase was just under 17%.
17%, yeah.
To us, and it was a very preliminary budget, and when asked if this was the highest it was going to go, the very quick response was no.
Yep. Yep.
So...
And we were asking whether they were going to, because they wanted to put some money aside, sort of a...
Contingency.
Contingency fund. So we, and that was very limited at the time. They were proposing 200,000, and I'm sure it won't stay at that. But we were asking how that would be used and, you know, why would we need to do that? But they were making arguments for why a contingency fund should be there. And then, I think we talked a little bit about the E and D and, you know, would any excess this year come back to the towns, et cetera, and whether or not they were going to stick with the same audit firm. So we asked a few questions anyway, and again, it was really just a very preliminary one, but I think Mickey Beal did a great job presenting the situation that he walked into, and we did thank him for working with Bradley to try and straighten out the grants so that Bradley can finish our books. So with a little luck, something will come about.
And I would say, I mean, this is my fifth year or sixth year on the school committee, and I've never heard more unified support for an entire regionalized district from the elected members.
Right.
So we're making some progress.
What's happening in terms of negotiations? Nothing yet finalized or...
It's still, it's still all executive, or mediation. It's a mediation now, so there's no public record of...
Yep. Okay.
The process.
So having invoked mediation, that's the fastest track it could possibly be on. That's driving towards a resolution. Is there a time deadline?
I do not believe so.
But at least it's third-party. It's...
Yeah, it's, what's it, Day 196, right?
Mediation, not arbitration.
Correct.
Yeah, but it's been a long time that they've been...
Our educators need the support, and we need to know what we're buying.
Yep. And when you were out, when Margaret came, but we did say that, you know, we still do want to have a meeting with FinCom and Select Board and members of the Regional School Committee to hear any new news. So just got to figure out the best timing of that, when they've got something more to tell us. So it may still be early March, I'm guessing, but, you know, I said we'd let them know whenever we could make a time for that because...
Yeah, I just think it's going to be important that the other, the other elected bodies of the town have an opportunity to express their concerns or their visions prior to those elected individuals casting a vote for that, whatever that budget is. And I think we need to know the number, but I also, also know we're going to go right up to the deadline, if not past it, that we want. So, you know, I don't want to, I guess I don't want to be in a spot where we were last year where our only choice was to vote down the budget.
Right.
Right? Because, you know, at least if we're having communication ahead of time and whether, whether, you know, they're independently elected, one's appointed, but at least, you know, have the opportunity to hear our thoughts before they saddle us with a X percent.
Okay. All right. Any further questions on that? All right, we'll keep on moving. How about FY22 audit update? Are we done with that thing yet?
I am working with them now and should be finished by the beginning of the week.
All right. Hopefully, they don't have too many questions that we have had to answer.
Not too bad.
And how about on FY23 closeout then?
I think we've already, I think we've already closed, covered that tonight with the school.
Basically, we're up to date except for the school. We're waiting on that to...
Yeah.
To do everything that we need to do.
Exactly.
Okay. Sounds good.
Which, from what Margaret said tonight, if they're going to finish their E and D by February 29th.
Yeah.
That was good news in my ears. So I would think that we should be able to, hopefully that Mickey and Bradley should be able to, and Munifin should be able to work and get us our stuff by the second or third week in March to finish that.
That would be, that would be great if we can do that. So, okay. Next up, we have, I guess it was just a request, and I, this was for, just to get a list of who the annual town report. First of all, a reminder to everybody who's on a committee, department heads, et cetera, I'm guilty as well of getting my annual report into duty yet, so please work at following the template and getting your annual report narratives into duty for the annual town report. This was a list that was in our packages of prior dedicated, dedications of the town report. Given that we don't want to usually reveal that, I would just suggest if people have ideas based on who you see on this list, to just shoot me an email with your recommended person and personal persons, or I guess we could have more than one person from the list here, but we've had a number of people dedicated over the last...
Chris, what's on the other side of that paper?
The Robin Richards signing, so the last page of the PQB.
Yep. Okay.
It's something or other. Yeah. So I have, I personally have somebody in mind, but I'm not going to reveal it, and I don't want to reveal it publicly anyway, since we're supposed to be kind of secret by that. Not secret, but a little surprise.
I had it a minute ago.
So, okay. So if you want to shoot me an idea for somebody, let me know. All right. Any other business that can't wait? We had this in our packages...
Yes, well...
The Board of Health question?
That, and we've actually got some other PC, PCFs that came down from the PPP that do under any other business and not make them wait a couple of weeks. But, yes, and your packets, I sent them out electronically, too. Last week, the Board of Health had reached out to the Greenway, but I guess they didn't know how to send it to the Greenway. So it came to me, asking about the possibility of the Greenway Committee looking at also planning for a sewer line to be placed into the right-of-way for the Greenway coming from East Hampton. And I checked back with our town council, because I seem to remember that since the town, back when they negotiated the, the acquisition cost and ended up deciding on using rail banking as the methodology in 2016 and 2017, I seem to remember that because of the rail banking, that the right-of-way didn't come with utility rights. So I checked back with KP Law, and they did confirm that. So, in the response, you have both the Board of Health, original letter to the Greenway with a CC to the Select Board, and you have my response back to the Board of Health regarding the fact that, no, there are no utility rights in that right-of-way due to the fact that we utilized rail banking. And that has gone also to the Greenway Committee, the Planning Board, I think the Select Board, and I think that there might have been one other CC on there.
Okay. Yeah. Planning Board, yep, was another CC. So, and I guess this came up because there was a thought that there is utility rights, or there is a utility line laid under the East Hampton portion of the Manhattan Trail, and this would be a great idea to try and connect if possible.
Correct. East Hampton did not acquire their rail trail via rail banking, and that's the difference.
So any connection to Southampton still has got to pretty much come down Route 10?
I mean, that would be the main thoroughfare that I can think of if it wanted to happen.
Okay. Yeah, because I think the rail banking, you know, and the deed and with the whole rail banking, you know, way of doing these things, and this was done, I mean, we didn't conclude it until a couple of years ago, but the whole thing was negotiated several years ago now in terms of using the rail banking arrangement.
It was negotiated before I came here, yeah.
So that's where we stand right now, anyway.
Where we stand right now is that we have the rail bank rights.
We have the right-of-way to the, to the railroad for, from...
For recreational purposes.
For recreational purposes from Coleman Road on down to...
Understood. So what...
Coleman Road to there.
What that says to me is that those rights that were not granted to the town in the rail bank agreement are retained...
By the railroad.
By the railroad.
Because they might, they have the ability through the rail banking definition...
They can take it back.
They can come back. I can't imagine that they would come back, and you make that an active railroad again, but that's the way the whole rail, rail banking thing goes.
With that in mind, there are other rail bank situations, rail trails that were rail-banked that have new utilities installed. How was that done? It's a separate bundle of rights that the landowner has retained and could...
Renegotiate.
Contract away. So we've identified that the town does not have the right to do it as it stands today.
We don't right now. No. Not, not the way that the deed is written and everything else.
So I understood it differently, having attended the Board of Health meeting, that they intended to ask the Select Board to look at the feasibility. So I think that there's a citizenry, public participation question the Greenway Committee certainly has the best handle on. But knowing that we already have a contract with Ty and Bond, and Ty and Bond had been invoked by the other members of the Board of Health Committee, called up Alex and said, "Alex, what even would the scope be? What would, what are we asking here in terms of feasibility?" He said, "I'll work with my people and we'll write up such a thing." So since they already have the Greenway loaded up in their computer and can look at the right-of-way issues from an engineering standpoint, what we've identified now is that there is first a legal right that we don't have to move forward with that. So, well, we don't have X millions of dollars to lay pipe either, so...
Right. And trying to renegotiate this agreement with the railroad took us, what, at least six years, the first time around to even get this far.
I'm sorry, to renegotiate took six years?
To negotiate the current right-of-way that we have. This started, like I had said, before he came here. So this started like in 2000, I don't know, 2015, 16?
And we don't want to do anything to jiggle that.
God knows. No. But I mean, I don't know, anyway, maybe we can take it up. I don't know, I mean, Ty and Bond is doing it, so I think it would be up to the Greenway Committee to talk to Ty and Bond, because they've worked out their schedule and their, you know, all their terms of reference of what they have to do. I mean, I think...
There's certainly involved...
There has to be a change order in the contract, and that's something town administrator would have to get involved in.
Well, we're doing... Well, we're doing all this design work under grant, grant work, so I'm going to say right out, it doesn't fall under the Greenway Committee.
Yeah, okay. So it does come back to us then, or?
I would personally say if that's what the town is interested in, then you should engage legal counsel and go back and see if it's possible to negotiate those rights.
For the utility rights? But what about having Ty and Bond, since they're already working on the Greenway, take a look at, what would you ask them to do, Stephen?
I'm sorry, go ahead, Stephen.
No, I just wanted clarity. What would you ask?
There, so the question from the board of health didn't focus on whether we had acquired the right to put the utilities there. It was phrased as the feasibility of running it, because, as you said, East Hampton has their sewer line in the same geographic location, though acquired differently. And I understand that there's been a series of conversations about how would Southampton acquire a sewer? It's always been by sending our sewerage to East Hampton. So I was visiting with the town planner on other matters, and I said, "Well, you know, the affordable housing project you just got approved, we have an opportunity down the way, but we don't have sewer." Who would I talk to about this notion that Southampton can join the East Hampton sewer program? And the town planner put me in touch with the Director of Public Works, and I imagine the next stop is the Water Department head. Other important sort of threshold questions are, if that's, it's not a four-inch pipe, it can't take very much of our load without rebuilding infrastructure in East Hampton, including potentially the treatment plant. So simple data to get what's the size of the pipe that we'd be hooking into, and what's the available capacity in your plant. And we can begin to get our arms around, is this a $5 million thing? Or is it a $50 million thing where Ed's identified one of the first roadblocks, which is, you don't own it yet.
John?
Well, so I was going to say, isn't that the easier box to check off? Is having KP Law send a letter on our behalf to the President of the Railroad over in Westfield to say, "Is there any interest in selling us those rights?" And if the answer right away is, "No, absolutely not," we stop. So I mean, versus Ty and Bond, which I get, the elevation and all that stuff to see whether we should, I mean...
Worth his, well, before engaging in getting more money and anything, yeah.
Because they may come back and say, "Yeah, I mean, we're open to it," then, then we can start spending money on it.
Yeah, I mean, that might be a possibility to just ask for them to send a letter off to the railroad. I think that would be at least a first step, and that would not, not engage us with any more money. And I think, you know, that, that's an okay first step. I wouldn't say no to that. I think, I think we do have to be careful, though, honestly, as, as we all have our own contacts, though. I would prefer if that were a charge either from the Select Board or from the Planning Board, that you make those contacts, because otherwise, we've got all of us running around making our own contacts. And I think it's, it needs to be a more coordinated effort, so I would just...
I hear you.
Pull it back just a slat, slat down that. But I do like the idea of at least exploring something. So maybe the first step would be to ask...
I'll make a motion to authorize the town administrator to draft a letter of inquiry off to the railroad about if there's any appetite for us to acquire the...
Utility rights?
Utility rights.
I mean, willingness to sell.
Yeah, if they have, yeah, yeah, to sell.
Okay, all right.
Second.
Second, all right. Any discussion, Dan? Any thoughts? Sorry. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. So we'll let you pull something together?
Oh, actually, that was ambiguous, so I'm just going to pass it off to Scott.
Okay, you can do that. You can do that. Come here next week.
No, I will take care of it before I leave.
Okay, any other PCFs you said you had, so? All right, then we'll be done.
Ed, would it be helpful if I drafted a letter for you?
No, thank you. All right, so...
Ours are short, and mine are less constrained.
In no particular order, we have an emergency PCF followed by a regular PCF for a Matthew Pooleer, Highway Department, part-time, non-benefited, not eligible for benefits, plow driver, to be used as needed with a CDL at $40 per hour.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to approve both of those.
Okay. Somebody second?
Second.
Come on, guys.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
We did two now?
Well, one's the emergency, two week in case we got that storm Tuesday night. And then the other one's just to have them available as needed.
I believe I just saw the sander go up the road.
It's snowing out there. It started 90 minutes ago.
Lot more risk being here tonight than two nights ago.
I think I have to sign that.
Hey, they knew there was snow coming. They just had it on the wrong day.
Yeah, the wrong day, that's all.
Next, we have a updated job description, no change in grade, no change in staff from the Water Department for the Water Service Technician. And most of this is grammatical corrections that are in there. There is the biggest thing in there that I would say is under special requirements. It adds in that the, it adds in the random drug and alcohol testing program. So in the event that this person who has a Class B commercial driver's license would substitute in for the Highway Department, they would fall under this. And also, the original job description had a Grade III public drinking water system. We're Grade I. We don't need that Grade III, which Brett Simmons, our Water Superintendent, believes why there's been a lack of interest, because you have to pretty much be in Worcester or Boston to have that certification of that system. A summary to post, and a PRF, which is the motion on the PRF, to allow him to post the updated job description with the new or the modified requirements. Same salary that is already on the books and approved. So the only change is he wants to pull down the existing posting that's there and replace it with this new posting with the modified description. So I'll make that as a motion.
All right, Dan, second. All right, any questions?
This is an empty position to be filled.
Correct. So the Water Department is budgeted for one superintendent and two water technicians. And there is currently one superintendent and one water technician. I do believe once Collins' report is done, they will create a middle position that potentially the...
Field supervisor, I believe it's called.
Yes, that the current field technician may qualify for.
Okay. All right, so I think we had a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right.
And then the last thing is a PRF from our police chief requesting authorization to post and recruit up to two part-time police officer positions. The only modification here is the pay scale is modified to $23.14, which is in accordance with the last modification that we just did to the contract. Less than 19 and a half hours, and this would be, you know, on call as needed type thing. But he's, he's hopeful that he can find a couple of part-timers, full-time certified people that want to work part-time that can fill in the holes as needed.
Fill in a couple of blanks.
So I'll make a motion to approve that.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right.
That is it.
Is that everybody?
Yes.
All right, perfect. Okay, so a couple of PRFs and a couple of PCFs. We've got it here.
And then I'll make a motion to approve September 14, 2023 minutes, November 7, 2023 minutes, November 21, 2023 minutes, and January 30, 2024 minutes as a package.
Okay, I think there's five altogether, is that right?
Oh, only four.
I see four.
Any second?
Second.
You're sleeping now there, Dan. Do you want to go home tonight?
The printed agenda, yes, the two that are not listed are November 21 and...
It's a November 7th and a November 21.
Oh, appear.
Yeah, we got them out of email. So I think there's, there's actually five, guys. September 14, November 7.
Yep.
November 21, I believe. All right. November 21 and, what's in here? Hang on.
January 30.
And, oh, yep, okay. I don't know why I thought I had another one. Yep, it's all the same one. Okay.
Let's leave the mathematics to me, and you call for the vote.
Four sets of minutes, okay. We have a motion, and did we have a second on that?
Aye, second.
Yeah, Stan's second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, perfect. Those are done. Very good. Okay, any other updates on anything on the agenda? I'm not thinking that we probably have anything offhand, but I would like to think about scheduling a possible meeting for budget hearing, and I know, John, you just mentioned next Thursday, something was going to be maybe with your fire search people, the 22nd?
Yeah.
That's, maybe that's what they have booked, because I think there was a booking, I looked on them, on my town, and the meeting room here was booked for the 22nd as well as the upstairs one. But maybe we can shuffle somebody around here. I'd like to try and do some first beginning of a...
Well, if we, if we hold the Fire Department one for 60 minutes, could then we meet at 7?
Yeah, we could meet at 7, and then just take the Fire, well, the Fire Chief could come in at that point in time. He wouldn't be a part of your meeting, right? He would have to come in to present his budget, right?
Yeah.
So if we did a 7 o'clock meeting on the 22nd?
I'm sorry, you skipped over that agenda item, so you can't go back.
You're just, you're just being difficult tonight.
Oh, and it's going to get worse.
He's ready to go in the next two weeks here, I tell you. I have to put up with this daily. You guys don't see him as often as I do. Anyway, yeah, I kind of, I hate to have, have everybody hang out here that long, but if you guys have already got this set for 6 o'clock, Scott's first day, and we've got to get, if we did, what would make sense? Would we do police?
Yeah, so I, so I, honestly, I need to confirm with the search committee that at least the majority of the search committee is able to make that night. I haven't done that yet, but if that is the reason why this room's booked.
Yeah, if that's the, yeah, if that's the reason.
It's, I know why it's booked. They're, they've started up trainings again.
So maybe a regular training meeting rather than...
Well, that's why they want to have it on a Thursday night, because the majority don't be here.
And file.
Okay. Well, I was trying to get one in, you know, and basically, honestly, poor Scott on his first day. Just to do that, get us started here, but if not, then the only other real option, the 29th FinCom is actually meeting anyway, which is Ed's last day, so it's, it's a toss-up one way or another here. But we need to do one or the other. Monday might be a possibility, but I don't know if that conflicts with a Monday for anybody. Monday the, Monday, oh, the Monday's a, no, Monday the 26th.
What's?
Monday the 26th. Monday, this coming Monday's a holiday, but, so either the 22nd, Thursday, but I'm not sure we'll have all of finance, because I'm pretty sure Becky's out of town from what she told me. Because it's school vacation week, so Dan, I don't know if you're around or...
We're around.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, are you talking about Monday the 26th right now?
I was.
That's not school vacation.
The week before.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Right, yeah, and the holiday. So if the 22nd is taken already as a night, FinCom is normally meeting on the 29th, so we could just wait and just do it then. Or try to squeeze in one on the 26th would be the only other option. But I don't know what conflicts on a Monday night for most people, if it does. I know it's probably an alternate night for somebody.
I've already got board, the Select Board down twice on 22nd, so I'm holding it.
Good, all right. We should do it. Well, let's, let's tentatively say, I will do a quick round of reconfirmations with, you know, what, what room is being booked and what we're doing here. But let's, let's hold the 22nd right now, and also the 29th, because the 29th is a definitive FinCom meeting anyway, okay? And then Ed and I will work out which committees might come before us. But somewhere between Police, Fire, and Highway will be our choices most likely, okay? And we'll see if we can get the ball rolling, at least on their departments, at least to start, start it going on that, okay? All right, if there's no other business?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned at about 9:10. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.